Good evening. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, August 12, 2019 at 7:03 PM. Back into open session. We're returning from closed session and I'd like to report there was no reportable action taken during the closed session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Mayor Santinas.
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Dan Coops and the Plights of Allegiance will be led by Len Gorecki, our Assistant City Manager and Director of Public Works. Please stand.
Please bow your head with me. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening now to give you thanks for all the blessings you've given to us collectively and individually. Be with us as we deliberate those items before us to give us the best answers as to what is our questions in our city of Bellflower. Please be with our city employees, our staff, be with our council as we strive to make the city of Bellflower a better place to live. We also want to remember those that protect us, our firefighters and our sheriff deputies that work day and night to make sure Bellflower is safe. Also, we want to remember nationally all our men and women in the armed forces who do their best to protect our nation and continue to make it the greatest place on earth to live. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Place your right hand over your heart and join me in saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Dan and Len. City Council announcements. I'd like first, I'd like to welcome back everyone. As you recall, we didn't have a second meeting in July. We were dark for the second meeting. So this is our first meeting in August. City Council announcements. The Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District has confirmed a positive sample of the West Nile virus. The West Nile virus is transmitted to people and animals through the bite of an infected mosquito. There's no cure for the virus. Symptoms can include fever, headache, body aches, nausea, or skin rash. More severe symptoms can include muscle weakness, coma, paralysis, and possibly death. It's recommended that we wear mosquito repellents with active ingredients as DEET, bicaridin, IR-3535, or Oil of Lemon Eucalyptus. And also, I'd like to encourage everyone to please take care of any standing water in your backyard, any pails, any buckets, any tires that may have some kind of water. Please clear them because that's where mosquitoes breed. For more information on mosquito prevention, please contact the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District at (562) 944-9656, or online at www.glacvcd.org. Mayor Protem Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. SCORE will be hosting a free small business workshop titled "The Secrets of Selling." It will cover probing questions, tricks to negotiations and closing sales, features versus benefits, salesperson no-nos, and much more. This event will be taking place tomorrow, Tuesday, August 13th, from 6:00 PM to 8:45 PM on the second floor here at Bellflower City Hall. To RSVP, please visit www.OrangeCounty.Score.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce will be hosting an Ice Cream Social and Business Expo on Thursday, August 22nd, from 4:30 to 7:30 PM at Sims Park. Come out and network with the businesses, with the business community and showcase your business with an exhibition booth, exhibit booth. Chamber members will receive a free table. Non-members will have to pay $25. Chamber must be receiving a registration form and payment by August 16th for questions about the event. Please call (562) 867-1744. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Youth Cultural Arts Foundation is seeking talented kids and teens for their 19th Annual Talent Show. Auditions will be taking place next Monday, August 19th at 6:00 PM in the Bristol Civic Auditorium. Kids and teens from all ages, 6 through 18, are welcome to participate. For more information, please call (562) 867-3524, or visit their website at www.BellflowerTheater.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Development Department invites you to their event, Coffee with Jim. Come out and chat with Jim and the Economic Development Staff about all the city happenings. Join them on Friday, August 16th, 7:30 in the morning to late 30 at the Fantasy Cakes Bakery, and that's located at 16427 Bellflower Boulevard, Bellflower. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the City Council.
All right, please come up. Let me just explain one time. Before you speak, please sign in and state your name for the record, because your name will be in the minutes of this council's meeting.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers of the chair. My name is James Cabral, and I'm a resident at 15146 Woodruff Place, Bellflower, California, Basically here on behalf of, to introduce the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, skilled professional labor union. We are here to just introduce ourselves as we've been on multiple school, school events. We'll be at the ice cream, at the business fairs, and we have, we want to invite you to possibly a luncheon or a walk-through for our facility, local union 714, located at 7111 Firestone Boulevard, Bellflower, excuse me, Buena Park, California, as well as our brothers and sisters from our surrounding communities. They live within Bellflower. We also contribute to the city by putting our kids into baseball cheer, what have you, and we want to continue to give back to the community by volunteering. And my brother is going to go ahead and get into the CUP participation program, which stands for the Carpenters Union Participation Program, which we give back, volunteer our time, and all we ask is that we just build that relationship with the city and eventually get in some of the projects that are coming up, as we have been in the past, in like Cerritos and around. So again, professional skilled labor, and I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up, Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, and my brothers might have something to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So let me just confirm your address is 7111 Firestone in Buena Park.
That's for the union.
For the union.
For the luncheon. But I reside at one.
No, but this is the address of the office?
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to have an open house?
It's not an open house. It's actually just an invitation for whoever can make it out and to take a tour and to just get some more knowledge.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for letting me come and speak to you. I too am a Bellflower resident. I live off of Greenhurst, right next to the former big Kmart, and I've been a longtime Bellflower resident for 18 years, and I too, I'm a business rep, and so we just wanted to introduce to Bellflower what the Carpenter Union is about. We want to be able to partner up and be able to partake in the construction that's going on in Bellflower. We like to get involved and get our resources and our skills and our trade and the manpower that we offer, because a lot of our residents do live right here in Bellflower, but they travel out to wherever the work is. And if the work is here local, it would be to our advantage to stay here local. So we just wanted to introduce ourselves and also talk about our CUP opportunity, our CUP program, which stands for Carpenter Unity Participation Program. Our carpenters here, we volunteer to paint schools, to clean up parks, but we're builders by trade, and so if the fire department, police department needs things built, hospitals and so forth, we have a volunteer crew that goes out and can handle these projects, you know, and they get, our members participate in it, and it's just another way of connecting with the community, another way of getting involved and exposing ourselves, and we hopefully it leads to forming a relationship with the members of this board and also the members on the community, the business community. So we just wanted to come tonight, other members that live here in Bellflower, and show that we believe in Bellflower. Also, we support Bellflower, and thank you for your time.
Again, thank you so much for attending this meeting. I have a question. Do you have a number that I can contact if I'd like to visit your office?
Yes, I do.
Can you give it to the city clerk, please?
Yes. Here's my card.
Thank you, Mayor. Very good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Can you repeat again when your luncheon's going to be? I don't know if I missed that.
No, it's actually going to be whenever is good for you.
Oh, got it. I thought you were going to have.
I have an email address and a business card that I can give to her as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Josh Murray, and I'm here on behalf of Clifton and Brackenseek Library, 9945 Flower Street. I'd like to invite the community to come to the library to participate in our Language Exchange Club. Teach others your native language while practicing the one you want to learn. Our Language Exchange Club is designed to help with you, help you with your language learning endeavors, and this adult program is on Tuesday, August 20th, from 5 to 6 PM. I'd also like to inform the council that the library will be closed on Labor Day, September 2nd, and I'm also here to let you know that we are getting a new roof. So we are tentatively scheduled to be closed from September 3rd through September 14th while demolition is performed on the existing roof, and we are tentatively scheduled to reopen for business on Monday, September 16th, and I will reach out to you to let you know when these dates have been confirmed. Thank you.
Very good.
Mayor, councilmembers, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name's John Butts. I'm a business person here in town. I dropped a little synopsis off a week ago, and hopefully each of you have got it and looked at it.
Mr. Butts, I just wanted to say that I've looked at your, what, eight or nine items on your list.
Yes.
I've looked, and we started addressing those issues, so if you can address any additional information for tonight, because we have a long agenda.
Well, I understand that.
All right, so we're on it, and we'll get back to you on those items.
Well, I know, I'd like to get, I'd like you to get back to me, especially on the apartment thing that I've been after for over four years. So when you say you're going to get back to me, I don't want to wait another four years.
Okay. We will.
Yeah, I'll update you this week, Mr. Butts, on the actual, on that this far.
Now, the cannabis thing, I can't talk on right now because that's on your agenda for later. I understand that, but the one item that, there's a bunch of people that live in this mobile home park here in town that I put on that paper. They're scared to death to say anything because they're afraid of getting evicted or retaliated against, and I've known them, they've come to me and over the past, so...
Well, let me just give an update on that, because based on the letter, I already talked with a building official in terms of your concern.
Yeah.
With putting bollards on the gas meter.
Right.
And our building officials stated that there is no requirement to put bollards by the gas meter. It doesn't make sense, though, but there's no requirement to put bollards.
According to the state of California, there is with the gas company. I know it's a state issue where the city has nothing they can do.
Yeah. So we're addressing them. We will get back to you. I'm just giving an example of what we have done so far.
All right, well, there's no sense of getting into all of this then, except for, I'm going to make the one comment.
Unless you want to add additional information.
I'm going to make a comment right now on this restaurant, Taco Nozzles, and the new one that opened, and the mortuary. When are we going to come to reality before we kill somebody? Whoever allowed that to happen there, especially with Taco Bell, that's been there for quite a while, and that man's going to lose his franchise over it when you get three Mexican restaurants on top of each other. Makes no sense. Very bad planning. Very, very, very unpurposely done, but my concern there is you got the local businesses, you can't even park at their business. The insufficient parking. And Mr. Hamada, I was at your meeting when you were on the planning commission and brought this up about possibly changing, updating, let's say, the parking situation so when a building is either sold or a new tenant moves into it, that they cannot have the grandfather clause of the past parking situation from 20 years ago. That would alleviate a lot of problems, because 20 years ago, you had a family with one vehicle. Today, you've got a family with three and four vehicles. So it's time to at least change some things, and that's the one key that I really wanted to hit on. So thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, John.
And good evening. I have received this letter from you from the city requesting from this, from the trash company, CRNR, to increase the rate. After I read what's written in it, I was talking to Bernie one time, a long time ago, and he came over to my house. He was having the wrong phone number to my house, and we discussed issues, and I discussed issues with city, with the CRNR personally. I don't understand why. It's not a matter of money. It's a matter of, there is no reason for it, because I was talking to the gas company today. They said they increased the gas. We are going up and down with all kinds of issues. Number one, we're asking for the SS's ID. SS's ID is a secret ID, should be kept between the county and the customer, the owner of houses. You're asking it in the application for the city. I don't understand why. The second thing, I was the other day, on last Friday, I was sitting with the Assembly Woman, our side, and it was a party, and I, she was talking about subjects, and all of a sudden, I requested to speak with her privately. If she has time, I did. We discussed the idea of the CRNR, and I told her lands, landlines, landscapes, they use the land, the dirt that we give them. All the things that they give us, they benefit out of them. On TV, it was published clear on Discovery Channel. They benefit out of these things. Everything we give them, they don't, they don't just give it, fertilize or do anything with it. They keep on selling it and benefiting money out of them. Besides all this, we are paying money out of our pocket to the CRNR. They keep on raising the rate and lowering the rate. I don't understand what kind of a game are we playing here that we can't tell CRNR, please stop playing games? They're asking for extra money. I don't understand, with all the money that we paying before, we still have waste company. We used to pay $18, even $16 a month. We did not care about this money, very simple, but now to pay $40 and up, and they're benefiting out of it, that's really... Second thing, I came over here personally and requested that us debate with them, talk back and forth on that exactly what they are doing, because we're not benefiting out of it. They're throwing trash, and the rest of cities, they mix the trash with the recycling, and the lady told me, let them dig for it. If they want the recycling benefit out of it, let them dig for it, and we can do the same thing in City of Bellflower. We let them put the recycling with the trash and let them dig for it if they want to benefit out of it.
Excuse me, Jeff, when's the public hearing for CRNR?
So the rate is going up.
Go ahead. Go ahead. The public hearing for the rate increase is going to be next, next City Council meeting, so I'd like to come to that council meeting so that you can voice your concern.
Well, can we can discuss it, because here, just in this paper, it says, just drop it, that's your protest, and that's not a protest.
Okay.
That's not showing to them exactly what they are doing wrong, and they discovered it. I can give you that paper right now.
You can give it to Mr. Gorecki.
And a lot of people can give you that paper and throw it in trash.
Can you accept the paper?
You want to take it here? I don't have the name on anything on it. You just want to take it, I can give it to you. It's not a big issue. The fact is, is that how we consider this one is protest.
John, Mr. Gorecki will accept your paper.
Is that your actual ballot? Is that your actual ballot that was?
Yes.
Go ahead and keep that. We have copies of the ballots that go out.
So you want to take it blank?
No, no, I have the blank already. You keep that. That's yours for you to vote on.
Yeah, but you have my name and address and SS.
I think he wants to submit this vote already.
Do we have to come over here and talk to them personally?
Well, not today, because we're not hearing it today, John.
Pardon me?
Next meeting is the, the public hearing is next meeting.
Next meeting, yes.
Yes.
So we are allowed to be here and talk and protest in a different place?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. It's public hearing.
Because this one doesn't allow us that.
Yeah, because we don't have the venue right now to hear you, because it's under public comments, but next meeting, we're going to hear you.
So we have to be here at 7:00?
If you wish to come, please come.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll be there.
Okay, anyone else on public comments? Okay, if not, then we're going to move on to item 11A.
This is a public hearing. Actually, I'm going to defer this one to the city attorney. No, I'm not. This is another item, mixed up. Never mind. Consideration of Public Action, Conducted Public Hearing to Consider Adopting Resolution 19-61, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for acquisition of real properties, Agreement File Number 837 between 16411 Bellflower LLC and the City of Bellflower for the disposition of real property located at 16411 Bellflower Boulevard, and we have the Economic Development Crew, the whole crew here to give us a staff report.
Mayor. Yes, Mr. Dutton.
I need to recuse myself of item 11A due to the fact that I have property within 500 feet of that location.
Oh, okay, that's right. Okay. Any other recusals? Let the record reflect that Councilmember Dunn is recusing himself on item 11A.
Mr. Mayor? With Mr. Dutton on it.
You're recusing yourself?
I'm going to recuse myself on the property issue.
But it's not listed here.
Well, I've just been directed by Mr. De La Longa that I should consider that. All right, historically, I have, so we want to make sure.
Okay. I was just following the list here.
All right.
And thank you for letting us know.
No, I don't want to mess this up.
I know. Exactly, we have to redo it again. All right. Also, let the record reflect that Councilmember Dan Coops is recusing himself on item 11A. All right, so we're working on three cylinders on this item. All right, Mr. De La Longa, it's all yours.
Thank you. I'm going to defer to Catherine John. She's going to do the presentation today.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight's public hearing is to consider the sale of three city-owned properties at 16411 Bellflower Boulevard, 9742 Main Street, and 9735 Oak Street. The proposed sale is between the city and the purchaser, known as 16411 Bellflower LLC, an affiliate of Serrano Development Group. It is anticipated that an application will be filed by the end of the year for development on this site. Combine the three properties, which are seen in yellow, are 1.56 acres and located on the west side of Bellflower Boulevard between Main Street and Oak Street. In 2016, the city acquired the Main Street and Bellflower Boulevard properties, which are known as the former Greek Market site. The Main Street property is now an empty lot that provides temporary public parking while the Regional Transit Center is being built, and the Bellflower Boulevard property is improved with the building that has been vacant for nearly 15 years. The third property towards the south is a public parking lot on Oak Street that the city acquired in 1967. The three properties are located in downtown Bellflower, where there's been significant growth. They are within walking distance of new projects such as Steelcraft, the Main Event Center and Fire Museum, the Future Regional Transit Center and Parking Structure, and the Future Metro Light Rail Station, which are all on that map above. Redeveloping the three properties with a high-quality use to complement these existing properties is desirable to continue the momentum of revitalizing the downtown and the local economy. The city entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the purchaser's affiliate, Serrano Development Group. Negotiations continue with that developer, but it's anticipated that it will file an application for transit-oriented development by the end of the year. Should an application be filed and a development eventually approved, then the development is expected to improve economic opportunity by creating jobs and increasing property tax revenue by at least 15%. Currently, the properties are blighted and vacant, and they are not generating any taxes or benefits to the city. The negotiated purchase price for all three parcels is $1.59 million, which is supported by a broker opinion of value study that was conducted by RSG Consultants in May 2016, or 2019. The study is based on comparable sales and the building site conditions of these sales within an eight-mile radius within the last two years. The study indicates that the fair market value of the properties range from $1.47 million to $2.28. However, the Bellflower Boulevard building is currently in shell condition, stripped of wiring, copper plumbing, and other infrastructure. As a result, the study believes the lower-end values are more representative. Pursuant to Assembly Bill 806, which amended several sections of the government code, including the process for the sale of city-owned properties for economic development purposes, staff has prepared a summary report that describes the important points of the agreement. It is attached as part of the agenda packet and was made available for public review along with the draft acquisition agreement prior to tonight's public hearing. So at this time, staff is recommending the City Council open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution Number 1961, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. And that concludes our report. Staff is available to answer any questions, and Mr. Jason Tolleson of 16411 Bellflower LLC is also here tonight to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. I just want to emphasize, I think, on this item, we are not discussing the development proposal for these three parcels. What we're discussing tonight is the sale of the property that's owned by the city. Any development plans should be submitted by the developer to the city, and the City Council acting as the planning commission will hear their proposals at a later date. So I just want to emphasize that we are not hearing about the development of this site for tonight. We're talking about the sale of the property. So having said that, can you remind us how much we paid for the property when we purchased the old Greek Market, just to, sort of for the benefit of our audience?
We paid $2.15 million in 2019. We paid two point one five million in two thousand sixteen.
Two point five one million, okay. So someone will ask the question, so why are we selling this for one point, one point six million dollars?
The properties are in worse condition than we anticipated when we purchased them. And in addition, the vacant land where the, where the parking structure or the back building was demolished and is now vacant land, so there's no building value there.
Mr. Mayor, I want to clarify. The, the reason why it's lower is we're looking at very restricted uses on this property to be announced later.
I understand. I'm just, for the benefit of the audience, because someone will ask, I'm just preempting the question.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just wanted to correct that. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be the restricted usage and the potential of the pollution that might have to be cleaned up by the developer on the property on the site there now.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to make sure that we, we are being transparent to our residents here, that somebody will ask that question, so I'm, I'm anticipating, yeah, so I just want to, yeah, thank you. And so, and then, I just want to clarify that we're selling the property as is. So anything that they find, once they acquire the property, they find something that's, that's on their own. Because we've done, I'm assuming that they've done their due diligence already. We have done ours, so it's good to go for the purchase.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's all I'm going to clarify. So any question?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just quickly, again, we are selling the property as is. And there was mention of the pollution that's, that's been identified. Where's that at right now from a standpoint of, yes, it's been disclosed. Yes, it's there. There's somebody working on it right now, or it'll be done?
No, there's no one working on it.
Hold on, let's back up, historic precedents on this. So it was on the dry cleaner that used to be on the corner, Bellflower and Oak Street there. There was a, the previous owners of the property had a cleanup agreement settled. For reasons not clear, they never filed the paperwork with the water quality control board on the cleanup itself. We're not sure what the current status, if it has been fully mitigated or not. And it's not clear whether or not any additional cleanup needs to be made. So we're hopeful that it's not a huge amount, and there was just an error in not filing the agreement, but we don't know. So what we're, what the developer is betting on and what we're betting on is that the mitigation is, is limited, if perhaps unnecessary, but we don't know that. And that's a risk that's being taken on of this property. And it was an all dry cleaning business, it's the type of pollution, yeah.
There's, look, there's a sixty-day, look, a due diligence period as part of the agreement. And we've known in the area that there's some liquid faction issues is, is there's, again, that's something that, that will be analyzed. And then sixty days, they're going to, they're going to, once we, if this goes through, sixty days for them to do any, any analysis and so on. And then if there's big-time issues and they don't want it, it can make it back our way.
Correct, they've got, they've got the time to do all their studies and, and decide whether or not they want to go forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mayor Protem Garza, second by Councilmember Hamada to open the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. Anyone would like to speak? I'd like to invite first the developer to speak. If I, I'd like to invite the developer first to speak so he can show off what he wants, what he plans on doing. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, staff. My name is Jason Tolleson with Serrano Development Group. We're very excited to be here today. It's been a year and a half or so of work with staff getting to this point. And I'm really here to just answer questions. We are proceeding full speed ahead. I think all the risk of the deal has been properly characterized, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Let me just, again, to, to inform our residents here. When the city purchased the property, then we solicited bids from, proposals from four or five developers, and we vetted them, and we were very impressed with their, with their proposal at the time. And that's why we entered into a exclusive negotiation agreement with Serrano Associates. So Jason, my first question is, not talking about the specific of the development, talking about the impact on the property tax. How much value are you, is your company putting in into this development?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there, there's been no development application filed. This is it, so I'll do deference to the speaker. I think there would be some sort of, some, a bit of speculation in, in answering that simply because the city has not processed a development application.
Okay, I understand that. But in one of the recommendation, one of the slides, they talk about increase in property tax by fifteen percent. Is it right? Is it, so I'm just kind of curious, what's the base of the fifteen percent?
And I think that Mr. De La Longa would be the, the correct person to, to answer that particular question.
So I, I'm going back to the value of the investment because to me, any increase in property tax will be dependent of how much they put into the property. Not talking about this specific development, but in terms of capital, talking about business, how much is you're capitalizing into this development? Is that something we can talk about?
I guess I could.
Yes.
You're looking to pigeonhole a project that we haven't developed a development agreement with yet. And this is a purchase and sale agreement that I believe that Serrano Group is coming back in September. I think the second meeting is September with a full update on what they really plan to do and go forward with that. Right now, I mean, you could, I suppose you could ballpark what your dreams are as far as what the build-out potential of that property is. But to specify a property tax amount now would be getting ahead of it, and we just don't have that.
Okay, I understand, okay. Okay, can you put back the slide, unless I misunderstood something on the slide? Okay, so tell me about this, it will create jobs and increase property tax revenues by at least fifteen percent?
We make that assumption based on the fact that the, it's owned by the city currently, and there is no property tax generated on that site.
So the fifteen percent is out of nothing? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm just lost, okay? Okay, I'm just, I'm just, I, I'm not coming up this question out of thin air. I mean, there's a basis for my question because.
There's a proposal.
I'm an accountant, okay?
Some analysis.
I'm an accountant, so. So that's something that jumped into my mind, well, at least fifteen percent. So there must be something like, it was based on X millions of dollars?
We've changed the scheme a little bit over the discussions with staff. So perhaps that came from the initial RFP submittal where we had a specific proposal that is now a little bit different than, than what it's going to end up at. But there will be tens of millions of dollars of investment, to answer your question, and all the property tax revenue that goes with that.
If you said tens of millions of dollars, that's good, okay. All right. And any question for Mr. Jason?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Hamada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason?
Yes, sir.
Again, thank you for coming. Just quick, if this, if this agreement goes through, the title, the ones title transfers, if I may ask, look at Carl, but it's mostly with the, the parking lot. So will you be fencing up the entire project area, securing it?
Once we close escrow, we will, and own the, the site, we will certainly enclose it for safety and security, yes.
Okay. All right.
And, and, and then we'll start construction as soon as possible thereafter.
All right. We're just, yeah, and from my take is just trying to figure out parking in the areas.
Right, right.
All right.
Yeah, I know that's a concern.
Okay, all right, no, that's, 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 that's definitely understandable. And hopefully, the public and the businesses can, can do their best to, to deal with it.
Yeah, and maybe staff can come in on the timeframe for the structure.
Yeah, again, city, city staff.
Okay, so I, I will address that concern is that we, by the time this development agreement gets done and they actually begin construction, the parking structure will be open, for sure. And then even on the worst case scenario, it'll be open.
Yeah, that's.
And that's three additional spaces, which will offset the, the forty-something spaces we're losing on that lot there.
That's for the public's information. Thank you, thank you, Jason.
Sure.
Jeff?
Mayor Protem Garza?
No, just a general comment that I, I read the report and I saw the deal points in terms of the actual, so, of the land, the transaction, and I'm satisfied, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Again, just for the benefit of the audience here, you may be wondering what we're approving here. We're approving the potential sale of the property. And even, even if, even though that there's not much specifics tonight in terms of development plans, they still have to come back to city council for approval. So we still hold the A, so to speak, in terms of what's going to go into the property. Okay, so there's no blanket authority for them to just build anything once we sell it to them, okay? So the guarantee is, they're going to come back to city council, pitch their proposal, and then we're going to approve it based on the merits of that development plan.
Agreed.
Did I summarize it correctly?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, yeah, it'll, lots of renderings and elevations and everything.
Well, just keep in mind that Bellflower is back, so the, the standards have been set high.
Yeah.
Bar is high, so you cannot come up with a mediocre plan.
We take that obligation very seriously.
Okay, very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item?
Ask one, one actual question to it. You're saying the property was valued at two and a half million or something. We're selling it at a million and a half.
It's a range based on the price, it's a range.
All right, and we're selling it at a million and a half, right? Whatever happened to the money that the city put up for redevelopment money when that was seismic over there for a million bucks? Where did that money go? That was the city money. Did we ever get that back from the developer that bought it?
I'm presuming he's talking about the old Greek Market site.
The old Greek Market, yes.
And that was a gamble that failed, and the Greek Market failed, and no, the city didn't get the money back.
So we lost a million bucks there.
There's no way to recover that anymore, it's based on price value.
I just wanted to ask the question. And we've already lost a million, so we're actually selling it at five hundred thousand dollars now.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Okay?
You know, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Just the response to that comment, I think it's, it's a valid point. And I think because of that point, I think the scrutiny that we've done for this transaction is a little, probably a little higher bar because we want to prevent that from happening again. But it's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And, and let me just assure you that based on the, again, it was a, like a beauty contest among the four or five proposals. And if everything holds true, if, if they deliver what they committed initially, based on their initial proposal, you will be very pleased in terms of what new development will come into the city. That's, I, I can say that much at this point. All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mayor Protem Garza, seconded by Councilmember Hamada to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution number nineteen dash sixty-one, authorizing the city manager to execute agreement file number eight three seven.
Second.
A motion by Mayor Protem Garza, seconded by Councilmember Hamada, for the city council of Bellflower to approve, adopt Resolution number nineteen dash sixty-one. Vocal, please.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Aye. Well, Jason, congratulations, and you got your work cut out for you. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Dutton and Councilmember Coops are rejoining the council meeting for this evening. So we lost our city manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, since the next item has to do with the city manager's contract, he asked me to explain that one to you, and I will also take on the city clerk's item, so perhaps you can consider A and B together.
Okay, so before we do that, I just want to state that there are no ordinances and resolutions for consideration, and we're moving on to item thirteen A and thirteen B taken together?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you kindly. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the two items for thirteen A and thirteen B have to do with the city manager's contract and the city clerk's contract. The first one is the city manager's contract, and quite frankly, I will throw myself upon the sword. This should have been taken care of back in twenty seventeen, as you'll see from the staff report. Mr. Stewart correctly pointed out, the city council had already approved a two percent increase commencing January first, twenty twenty. And for whatever reason, it did not make it into the contract, so that's on me. That was approved in twenty seventeen, however, after a successful evaluation of the city manager by the city council. The, if approved, the increase would amount to five thousand five hundred and forty dollars on an ongoing basis after January first, twenty twenty. The second item is thirteen B, this is the city clerk's contract. This one, I believe I wrote correctly. And the, the proposed increase approved by the city council, or previously considered by the city council, is three thousand dollars for year one, which would be January first, twenty twenty, and another thirty-one hundred dollars for year two, which would be in twenty twenty-one, commencing January first, for a total of sixty-one hundred dollars for years one and two. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so basically, these increases have been approved at city council already in closed session and then later on in, in open session. And we're basically memorializing those changes in their compensation package.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any question?
Yeah, I think some, somewhere the disclosure laws have changed since seventeen and now, right?
The, there were changes in the Brown Act which require executive-level employees' entire salary to be placed on an open-session item and cannot be part of the consent calendar. Also, the agenda description has to describe exactly what the total compensation package is and how much this reflects in terms of, of an increase.
Okay, any other question? We're good, okay? Any, any comments from the public? Any comments from the city manager if he, if he wants to decline? How about the city clerk? No?
And with that said, Mayor, I'd like to approve thirteen A and B, make a motion for it.
A motion by Councilmember Dutton, seconded by Council, Mayor Protem Garza, for the city council to approve item thirteen A and thirteen B as presented. Vocal, please.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
There, aye. Item thirteen C.
This is another compensation item, this is consideration of possible action regarding one-time payment in the amount of eighty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars to Mr. Stephen L. Patterson. He is our building official. For the extra work that he performed over the past several years at the Main Event Center, and this goes back three years, the Main Event Center and at the city's downtown current parking garage. What happened was, the city had a construction management agreement with another private firm going into the preliminary construction period with the main project. It was clear to us that that relationship wasn't going to work. We were not on the same page with that construction management firm, and we decided to let that contract lapse. It bears noting that that construction management contract would have been in excess of two hundred thousand dollars for the main project alone. Mr. Patterson stepped in and functioned as the, more than the de facto, but the actual construction manager on the main project, and has continued that work just because we expected him to on the parking structure. Over the past two years, we've talked a couple times about how much compensation should be in place for Mr. Patterson on that work, and we just never got to, we never got to it. It just didn't happen. So rather than let this go any further, I decided I kind of cornered Mr. Patterson and said, listen, we've got to solve this thing now. We've got to figure out how much we owe you because you have definitely performed the work and you've done it well. And we want to make sure that your work has been compensated because he is actually spending an additional day and a half a week in the city over his contract with Broadspect as the building official. Mr. Patterson finally did calculate a rate over the hours that he has worked and has actually taken a reasonable estimate of the hours that he has worked at the parking structure and what he expects to work during the remainder of that product, and he've come up with a number of eighty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred seventy-three dollars. I think it is a, a very reasonable amount considering the amount of work that we've gotten out of Mr. Patterson. I think the work that he's done is outstanding, and I recommend, frankly, strong. I think the work that he's done is outstanding, and I recommend frankly, strongly that the council approved this item of compensation for Mr. Patterson. It's worth noting, it's a one-time payment. He's not coming back just for additional payment for anything related to construction management on any project ever. So. So.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I, I'd like to invite Mr. Patterson. See if he's going to decline it. Mr. Patterson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I, I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of Bellflower. I, I think you have done an outstanding job. People may not know this, and it's amazing what you have done in the, the Main Event Center and also what you're doing now with the parking structure. Let me just share this with you. I went to the, uh, construction trailer of the parking structure unannounced to visit the parking structure, and I saw him instructing the construct, the contractors, what they're doing, scheduling, what they have to be done, and things like that. So there's no, there's no doubt in my mind that the Main Event Center was constructed properly and the parking structure will be constructed properly because of your dedication. And I'm just kind of at awe with what you've done because you, you've done this additional work without thinking about extra compensation. I think you've done this out of the goodness of your heart because you want the city to succeed, and I really respect that. I appreciate what you have done and what you intend to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So now, city manager, what assurance can you give us that this doesn't happen again? Because I want to make sure that we are fair to him, that any future, this is not the last, this is not the last construction we're going to have in Bellflower.
If.
So let me, let me just finish.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that there's something budgeted for him. If he will maintain the work that he's doing, I, I hope he will because of the quality of the work that he does, I want to make sure that it's in the budget.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think that if we ever do use Mr. Patterson's services for construction management, and I sincerely hope we do, we will do a separate contract at the outset to make sure that he's compensated appropriately for the work that he performs, and we don't have to do this again.
Yeah, because I'm glad that there's money, extra money left.
Yeah.
Otherwise,
Yeah.
we're going to have difficulty finding the money for him.
And quite honestly, I mean, with the way this happened is Steve is a team player. He's never made any bones about that, and he started showing up for work, and we just never thought about the compensation until fairly recently. Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any?
Yeah, I'd like to add one thing. Because, you know, there's a lot of people that don't know, these two projects were well over $20 million. And for Mr. Patterson to oversee that kind of projects for the $87,000, it's well worth it. And I know what we, we're going to pay that first consultant firm, so we got a deal. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, again, thank you. Again, I want to echo the comments, and you know, today I did one of those unannounced visits to the parking structure. Steve was there and he happily showed me around. I know Steve could probably walk that structure in his sleep. I mean, he knows the ins and outs of that. I mean, the level of detail and knowing the, the structural components, the, you know, the timing for the pouring and, and his, again, constant dialogue with the contractors. He tells me he's there every day to, to make sure they do their job. And Steve, again, just, just, I mean, just the amount of time I've gotten to know you, I just, I just, I respect you immensely and, and I know you're doing this awesome job and, and it's definitely paid off for this, this town. Not sure if it's going to be the Steve Patterson parking structure, but, but, but no, you know, it, it, you, again, you, you have your, your mark on major projects in town, and we thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for all the kind words. I appreciate it very much.
I got kind words.
Oh, Mr. Coops. You're not, we're not done yet, Mr. Coops.
Well, the, the fact that you were able to provide, provide the leadership to build those structures which are outstanding quality, which we had never have gotten that level of quality unless you were there to oversee it. And when you took Mr. Dutton and I one night over there to show us how the rebar was off six or eight inches in some of the columns that were being put into the parking structure, that precise, it's the architect drew it this way for a reason. It's for strength. It's for longevity. It's for appearance. And I'm not letting him slipshod this. They could easily come in here and put a load of concrete over it, and no one know the difference. But I'm holding them accountable so that the plan is what was expected by you and approved by you and by the city council. You're getting what you paid for. And I appreciate that so much because those structures define this city council's work for the last eight to 10 years. And by doing such a wonderful job of conducting that, those construction projects, you made our town look better. You made our city council make it look better. And that is something personally, I want to just, I admire you so much to have the sun, the moon, the stars all come together where we could have the utilization of your services at when we needed them, and you were available. That was magnificent. Because you could have had another, I know you've got projects, you're doing Indian casinos in the desert, you're doing other things, but you concentrated on the things here in Bellflower. And what a difference it makes. And those buildings will be here 100 years or longer. And it's because of your detail to workmanship that we have that. And as far as the money goes, you're a deal. You heard what the city manager said. We were going to spend over $200,000 for one project and not get near the service that you offered. So it's a wonderful value, wonderful relationship that we enjoy with you as our building official with Broadspeck, and you're able to translate into more great relationships with our premier buildings on the boulevard. Thank you so much. You did a great job for us.
Thank you all very much for your kind words. Very, very humbly. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just.
Mayor Protem, I'm sure you will say something.
Just really short. We're blessed to have you. Thanks for all you do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Bellflower is my home. That's how I see it. And I want to tell you, it's a great pleasure representing the five of you, working for Jeff, for Lynn, and Carl with their guidance and leadership. Those are rewards that nobody can put a value on. Thank you for that very much.
We thank you. All right, any comments from the public? Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve 13C.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Dutton, seconded by Mayor Protem Garza, to approve recommendation on Item 13C. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Garza.
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Mayor Santinas.
Aye.
Okay, Item 13D, Mr. Stewart.
Well, I think we're recommending that do the, on 13D that we have a conflict coming up on that, so I think we're recommending that we move the consent calendar ahead.
Oh, that's right. Thanks for reminding me.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will handle first the consent calendar before Item 13D. Any item you'd like to be pulled or any recusal on Item 3, on the consent calendar?
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Dutton.
I'd like to recuse myself from the consent calendar, Item 14I, either property within 500 feet.
Okay, anyone else?
Just, I'm not sure if this is.
Correction. Yeah, I was going to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just a quick note that on Item 14G, to the Bellflower City Council minutes of June 24, 2019, on page four of the report, there's a minor modification in the middle under, under Item 10, which is a traffic consulting firm that it, it's going to state that will be hired. I think the prior iteration said that, that has been hired.
Okay.
We're just changing.
All right, so you'll make the correction on Item 14G. All right.
That's it, Mr. Stewart.
Really noted. Mr. Coops, any recusals?
I don't believe so. Of course, I've said that before and been wrong. No, I think I'm fine.
No recusals?
Um, 14, let's do 14M. About the demolition of the building over there. I'll take myself out of that one.
Okay.
And 14D.
14D, all right.
Also have a concern for the same property address, 9428 May 9446. Uh, maybe an issue there, so we'll let that. Both 14D and 14M, I recuse myself.
Okay. Anyone wants to pull an item? Now, is there a motion to approve the consent of calendar? Motion by Mayor Protem Garza, seconded by Councilmember Hamada, to approve the consent calendar, noting that there's a correction on 14G, and then Councilmember Dutton is recusing himself on Item 14I, and Councilmember Coops recusing himself on Item 14D and 14M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Garza.
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Mayor Santinas.
Aye.
Okay, now 14D, 13D.
This is consideration of possible action to amend city council policy to allow recreational cannabis business permits to be issued in Bellflower.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to recuse myself out of Item 13D to the, due to the fact that I have an employer-client conflict on the side.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that Mayor Protem Garza is recusing himself on Item 13D. Okay, Mr. Stewart.
So let me start by saying this is an item we don't really, we're not thrilled to bring you. It is an item that we've been working on cannabis, as you know, for the past three years, starting back in 2016 and carrying forward to now, and it's been a work in progress with twists, turns, and surprises at every turn. The latest is, and the city council, I believe, in all earnestness, agreed to do medicinal marijuana only for its 12 permits, 12, when it started this process back in 2016 and beyond. And they was based on old data. And the whole, the whole reasoning behind these medicinal cannabis prints was the economics of it. And it was to help enhance and replace revenues that were, the city would need in the future, and the revenues that they anticipated they would be losing with the expiration of the transit occupancy tax last year. At the time, we went with the market standards and we had a, a good consultant talk, talk to us about the estimates on the revenues that would be available, and we had good data on the number of cannabis licenses that were available in LA County, and we thought that it was pretty safe ground to do it. Well, then several things happened. One, the state was still in the middle of changing its guidelines, and they did, they made dramatic changes to both its medicinal and recreational guidelines. Two, for partially the reason I stated before and partially economic, the dispensaries, the four dispensaries approved by the city were slow to open. Frankly, all of the uses approved by the city have been slow to open, and a portion of that was due to, I believe, the fact that the medicinal marijuana market had been slowing dramatically due to the changes coming from the state level and things that we didn't become aware of until fairly recently. What's happened is last year, the state changed and cracked down on the medicinal marijuana licenses, changed the standards completely on what they would do, and the result is that in LA County, the number has dropped dramatically, and the revenues that the city anticipated getting from the medicinal marijuana dispensaries and the other uses was, was estimated at 1.8 million at one point last year, and it's been lower to $1 million this year, and we're even wondering where it's going to go now. Now, before I end this, I'm going to read from a couple statements in the staff report that bear reading, but before this, I want to state that the, the recommendation tonight is based on economics and economics only. We are concerned that the business owners will not make it in this environment in a medicinal-only arena. And frankly, if the business owners don't make it, this will be a grand failure, and it's not something that, you know, we look forward to dealing with, mainly because we'll have to compensate the loss of revenues with some other fees, taxes, or whatever, or vastly reduced services to offset the loss of those revenues. Neither is really enticing, frankly. And two, in, in the staff report on, on page three, it indicates that according to state data, there has been nearly a 40% drop in cardholders in the last year. In 2018, 2019, only 651 people in Los Angeles County held an identification card through May of 2019. In addition, you can get a temporary use and do that. The identification card exempts you from taxes when you buy cannabis in these locations, but you can get a temporary identification card that allows you to buy taxes. The process is, it costs 100 bucks, and it takes about a half an hour to 45 minutes to do. And what we're learning from our dispensaries, the operators that are currently open, is that people don't want to wait for that. They're just going to drive a mile and a half to Long Beach, and they're going to buy their, their marijuana there, their cannabis there. So it's one of those things where we didn't anticipate any of this, but it's going to happen, and it's been happening. So we're looking at creating a situation where we can collect the revenues that we wanted to collect. We originally started doing this because it wasn't never a philosophical thing. The, the, we believe that the marketplace has changed dramatically. We believe that a lot of it was manipulated by the state of California when it changed its licensing standards, as I stated before. And what the staff is reluctantly recommending that you approve the recreational cannabis uses here for reasons of maintaining the recommended, or the expected revenues that we look to receive from all the 12 permit uses that were approved originally back in 2017. So I'm happy to answer any questions. There's a fair amount of information that are given in the staff report. We have folks that have opened their medical dispensaries in town that I'm sure will be willing to speak tonight to answer any questions you might have. Or, excuse me, or anything else that may come up. But with that, the staff does recommend that you approve the recreational use tonight.
Okay, I, I have a question because you mentioned that your, the staff recommendation is purely based on economic reasons. Okay. And our residents know, well aware of this. I think we have formed a, a revenue committee to kind of address any shortfall or potential shortfall in, in our revenue stream for the city. So how, how would you kind of reconcile the two?
Okay, so let me start by saying, one thing I didn't add before that I should have is that I know there's a lot of folks that are willing to say, well, these business owners, these business owners that, that opened their dispensaries here are overcommitted and didn't step up, and just because they're failing, why should we change the rules? Well, I would argue that the business owners that have opened to date have stepped up and guaranteed their revenues through the course of this year and are paying fair amounts of money that exceed what their actual sales are. So from that perspective, I believe that they have been, have met the city more than halfway. I mean, not, not voluntarily. The, the council requested them to do it, they stepped up and did it. So that, I did want to add. Secondly, this is a, a tax, and it's a tax based on the sales or the, a retail sale. It is cannabis, but it's still a retail sale. It is a tax that the residents of the city don't pay unless they want to buy cannabis at one of those facilities, and then they would pay the tax. I would reconcile this. We have a revenue committee going. I would say that if we don't collect the taxes that we hope to collect from the cannabis activities, and we look to balance a budget and we don't want to reduce services, then you're very, you're very likely looking at an additional tax to the residents in, in the form of, well, there's numerous forms, sales tax, U T, T O T, other things like that. Again, as this council knows, that's not something that we recommend lightly. It's, and we're looking at just maintaining the economics that we hope to have in this town so we can continue doing the kind of work that we've been doing over the past three or four years and doing so with an enhanced license rather than going back to the taxpayers for additional taxes.
Okay, thank you. Any question for Mr. Stewart?
I have none.
Okay. It's open to public comments. First of all, I'd like to ask you, how many of you would be speaking on this item? How many? So one, two, three, four, five, six? Okay. All right, so it's a, it's a, it's a decent number, so we're.
Yeah, you better double it.
Okay. Let me, let me ask again. If there's any chance you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Any slight chance? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. Okay. Let me just ask you for a big favor. Please listen to the testimony, to the comments from the speakers, and please do not repeat something that's been spoken about. Just speak about something that's new. We're not trying to limit your pre-speech, but please be cognizant that if somebody mentioned about this item already, please do not repeat it because it's going to be in the records already. So please offer some, offer something new to us when you, when you speak before the city council. Okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Robinson. I'm a local business owner. I'm also a graduate of Bellflower Christian Schools. I wanted to say thank you.
I wanted to say thank you, mayor and council members, for being here and being progressive with this. I think it's very important, the progression as it goes forward. I do think that the state has done a lot of things that has made the, the actual, in the way the ordinances are written and the rules that are have to follow. So this is definitely something that needs to be version two, version three. It needs to evolve along with the state as we go forward with this. This is new ground. The biggest thing is the regulations. As businesses in different cities remove these regulations, more of these stores are opening. And I know when I go dress shopping with my wife, she wants to go where there's multiple stores and look at different things, not be pigeonholed to just going to one spot in one area. I think that it's very good for commerce and planning and everything else to be doing that. I think that that's a very good idea. The biggest thing is with the way the state has done the, all of the recreational and the medical licenses. If you look as of Friday, the California Department of Food and Agriculture had one thousand eight hundred and nineteen recreational licenses and nine hundred and seventy-nine medical licenses. In acreage, that amounts to four hundred and fifty acres of recreational and two hundred and twenty-five acres of medicinal. The state is forcing this business to go recreational, which is not necessarily a good thing, but it is the way it is going. And I appreciate that you guys are doing this because this needs to be done. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, evening.
Good evening.
Mayor.
You can just sign in, please.
Mayor and council. My name is Joe Cabrera Zermeño, a registered voter in the state of California, county of Los Angeles. I'm a resident of the City of Hawaiian Gardens, community activist. And I'm also a, a member of the ABC Unified School Board District Measure B B Citizens Oversight Committee, representing the Howard Jarvis Tax Association. I'm glad that you are finally going to tackle and uphold what the registered voters approved. This may be an issue right now for you for taxes, closing certain businesses that have come up because of lack of revenue and programs. And it's nice that you're seeing it in those terms. I'd like to see it in terms of you obeying the US Constitution and the Constitution of the state of California. The registered voters voted yes. Medicine Woman Business just opened up, and it really gives the appearance of a very high-end Neiman Marcus boutique market. Clean, a place to shop. Everything's labeled, lots of parking. Away from the schools, I understand there are only four licenses here. You've done a good job in however you've done it. I highly recommend you come see this business, and you see the possibility of, once it's advertised, that recreational marijuana, not just for the ill and the infirmed, but people who voted for it, can now buy what they voted for. So thank you, and I hope you do. And I'm getting a little disingenuousness from the person who presented it, that he's, he's reluctant. I don't think you should be reluctant. You're just obeying the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Joe Cabrera Zermeño. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I wish to speak on this personally myself. And as you know, I am against drugs. But this here, I helped promote it in the beginning because it's an item that is viable and it's useful. And it can be controlled, and that's why I pushed on this in the beginning, where a lot of people were very reluctant to speak on it because they didn't rock the repercussions. Well, it is a tax thing, like Mr. Stewart said, to help the city. But it's more than that. Because as much as I'm against certain things, my wife takes the stuff because she uses the, not the pot itself, but the other liquids and stuff for pains, and it does work. So it, it is a viable, a viable item. So it's not just the money that you're going to get from revenue, it's also helping the general public. It's an item that should have been out there years ago, and it would have been controlled years ago, and there wouldn't have been so many problems of all this drugs and stuff. Now, I do know the city took some steps, listening to idiots like me and other people. And we all screwed up to a certain extent. But we all look at it in the aspect, I do, and I know all of you do, how do we correct this so we can move forward? It's a shame that we didn't put a construction plan together of, if you're going to get the license, you're going to have it open in certain days, or you're going to lose the license and forfeit everything you put in it. It's, it's a shame that wasn't in place, and it's a shame it couldn't be in place now. Because you've only got two places open selling out of all those licenses. And the sad part, which I'm going to go against, an item that was brought out a few weeks ago, I don't want it in my part of town. Where the kids walk by this and they could, they could sneak in there and buy some. That's the thought and mentality of some people setting up there and out here. To me, you've got them all in one corner of town. And what are they going to do? Cut each other's throat trying to make a sale? I basically brought it up several times. You need to put it in the four corners of town. Because Downey doesn't want it, why not grab it from Downey? Paramount. Norwalk is going to start proposing to put this up for vote to pass it too.
Mr. Butt, can you limit your comments on shifting from medicinal to recreational?
Well, it all comes to that. If you don't go with the recreational, you might as well throw it out the door and bite the bullet. And none of you will have a seat if you try to put a tax on everybody to raise the money that way. We respected everybody when they said, we're going to take that utility tax down that two percent. Hopefully, maybe we can get rid of it someday. This will take the place of it. We've got a four- or five-year window, that's it. And if you don't grab it now, you're a damn fool. I'm one hundred percent for putting this in recreational. And I'm also recommending that you open it up somehow to allow additional dispensary and distributions. So that maybe you can get them into the north part of town. And you can get revenue from other cities. Because with your grocery stores here, everybody around you, we all go shopping in other cities because the grocery stores are going. Ralph's closed. So where's everybody go? Someplace else. So it's time the city looked out for the city and the general public here. But I'm one hundred percent for the recreational, and anybody that isn't, it's a damn pool, to generate the taxes to help this community. And you know me, I've always said, I'm, I don't look out for myself, I'm looking out for the community. And that's one thing. And Mr. Stewart's done a hell of a job trying to explain this and try to keep it off of your backs up there. But it's time you stood up to the plate and stood behind him and just pass this damn thing. It's for the, everybody, it's for the benefit for everybody in this, in this whole audience.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor.
You can sign in and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Andre Burwick. I'm a new resident to the city. I just moved from Texas, Arlington, Texas. The reason I moved is because California is a forward-progressive state, and I love the fact that you guys are open to a lot of things.
So are you living in Bellflower?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good.
Yes, sir.
Why did you choose Bellflower?
My cousin lives out here, and she's been trying to get me to come out here forever.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so...
You made the right choice.
Definitely, definitely. So I see, this is my first city council meeting that I've ever been to, and I'm glad that I'm able to talk about cannabis because cannabis has, you know, helped me and, you know, ample other people. I was having a conversation with a friend today, and he stated that, you know, his business or the business he's involved in was losing money due to the fact that, you know, they, they were giving out store credit for medicinal card. You know, so that way, whenever the customers come, they get their medicinal card, but they, they only use the store credit. So it was brought to my attention that the businesses were losing money. So a, a simile or, or something that I have to, 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 you know, go off of what he's, what he told me is, you guys are kind of acting like the grossest. You know, you put your hands out and, you know, take away the tax revenues and everything that these companies are making. And, you know, they work very, very hard to do so. I would just, I'm just advocating for recreational because not only will you guys get, well, the dispensaries get multiple, like, different customers, consumers coming into their stores and whatnot, but the tax revenues and whatnot could be used, you know, for like roads or, you know, anything else that the city might need. I mean, my man Steven, you guys allow him to, you know, make the city a lot more beautiful. Why not use that money to make, you know, the city even more beautiful with different buildings or anything that the city might need? I'm, I'm familiar with what the city does need, but I feel like everybody would love a lot more revenue and money to, you know, do the things that the community wants to do, you know? And just being in the cannabis industry myself, everybody's close-knit, you know, really a family. Everyone comes together, well, the dispensaries and the companies that I have worked personally with, they come together with different community events. LBCA, I know that's Long Beach, but you have different, different dispensaries here within Bellflower. I know of one personally, the Medicine Woman, they, they are actively involved in the community and whatnot as well. So I feel like you guys should, you know, go ahead and make recreational sales available to the city.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Matthew Brown. I've spoken here a few times. I'll tell you all are a damn fool if you'd pass this crap. You know, I don't need this. My wife and I can't walk through the park without smelling this crap. And now everybody and their brother, who's over, I believe, the legal age of eighteen, can walk into any pot shop and purchase their marijuana and sit out and smoke it and create more of a stench in the city than it already is. Here three years ago, the medical side was going to be the end-all, cure-all for Bellflower's ills financially. I tried to stand here and tell you all, you're a fool to think that. It wasn't. City has lost their shorts going down this road. And now you think the end-all, be-all is to make it recreational would be okay? Mr. Butt said you only have a small window. I believe it's even smaller than that. Think you all are a damn fool if you pass it. Due to the fact that, you think people want to pay their taxes still? They still have the little knuckleheads on the corner selling it to them. Come on, you're going to charge ten, fifteen, twenty percent at the dealers? And they don't have to pay it, and they can go get it from their buddy down around the corner? Let's get smart about this situation. Mr. Stewart, businesses go out of business all the time, for whatever reason. Poor planning, lack of business sense.
Sir, you have to address the council. You have to address me.
Okay. Again, businesses go out of business all the time, for whatever reason. And again, if the pot shops go out of business, that's their problem. It's not the city's responsibility to sit here and stifle, stifle in the pot shops for any reason at all. You know, if this doesn't work, what's the next thing to do? State wants to legalize other medication, or medication, other drugs as well. We going to go down that road too? That's a hypothetical you can't answer at this point in time. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Elliot Lewis, Eel Holdings LLC. I just wanted to cover a few items. Mr. Stewart did a good job kind of going through the history of the state and everything. I think at the time this was originally passed, there was a more robust medical market. Now we're seeing in our stores about ten percent of the market left is still medical of the people that are cannabis users, that would, you know, even use cannabis, only about ten percent of them have cards. Just to give you an example, our store, four oh five connected store, very similar, next to a freeway, similar demographic, everything should be about the same to the store we have there on Artesia. Friday night, we did twenty-four thousand in revenue. Saturday night, we did twenty thousand in revenue here in Bellflower. We're doing ten percent of, of the same revenue. Other point I'd like to make is the illicit market. That's our real competition out there. That's really who we're up against. We don't, we compete against each other. But by far, right now, in this state, and the B C C is cracking down. But our biggest competitor is the illicit market, and they sell recreational, they sell to anybody, they, they do whatever. So to have a chance...
Let me catch you off here. Is there any illegal dispensary that you love in Bellflower?
There's, if you went on Weed Maps, there's a ton of delivery services. Yes, sir.
In Bellflower?
Yes, sir. You could go on right now. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, delivery services are allowed by California law. There's nothing that we can do about that.
With all due respect...
But in terms of dispensary, dispensing...
No, with, with all due respect, City Attorney, these are illegal delivery services that are, are, are being advertised. Now that Bellflower has an ordinance, you can't deliver into the city of Bellflower. The only city, the only people that could deliver in the city of Bellflower, even from Long Beach, I can no longer deliver into Bellflower. If you have a ban, you're allowed to deliver into that city. So there's only two potential legal delivery businesses that are open right now, ourselves and Medicine Woman. The point for me to make is that, you know, the amount of cannabis use...
No, here's what I'm getting at.
Because if you're aware of any illegal dispensary or delivery, if you can forward the information
to our city manager, because we'd like to go after them.
Okay, go, you could, just as an easy way to help, go to weedmaps.com.
Yeah, please do, okay.
No, I'm just saying, go to weedmaps.com. I'm not sure what the exact count in Bellflower is. I know there's eighty-six in Long Beach. Long Beach has also been very good at, at closing the, the brick and mortars. If you go to weedmaps.com, there's a bunch of cases against them, they're still going. You, you, you could pull it up right now, and I, you know, I assure you that there's illegal...
Because we'd like to go after them.
No, and, and believe me, on that issue, I think we'd be a hundred percent...
That's something that we can work together.
Right, and, and that comes down to safe access. You know, they're not paying their taxes. They don't have good jobs. All our, all, all our, you know, workers are, 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 you know, union employees. You know, so the, the other thing that, that, you know, I think is important to touch on, you know, you know, we do want to be successful here in the city of Bellflower. I get it that it's not your responsibility to make as successful as, as businesses. But if you are going to have a robust cannabis, you know, operation going on in the city of Bellflower, this is something that, that does need to happen. We're approximately losing, you know, forty thousand dollars a month. We're staying the course for now. We're, we're trying to inch up the business. It, it's very difficult. You know, we have some staying power, we're, we're kind of making the, the long play. But, you know, we are definitely, you know, feeling the pain, and, and we're here asking the city of Bellflower, as a, as a group that's come, we've, we've committed, we've spent a lot of capital, we want to have a thriving business. You know, whatever your views on, on cannabis are, you know, we feel like we're, we're bringing a very valuable thing to the community. And, and, and just as a, as a, as a business owner in general, you know, we're asking for help. You know, we have a lot of union jobs that are attached to the dispensary. We've whittled down to as few people as, as we can, so we don't lose as, as, as much money as, you know, that, 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 you know, we're trying to minimize... you know, we're trying to minimize, um, the losses, but with the recreational, I'm pretty confident we'll go at least five X, if not more, in, uh, in revenue and, and that also, uh, you know, creates jobs. Let me see if I have a couple more points here. Sorry. Oh, the other thing that I also wanted to, that, that's important, I think sometimes the line between medical and recreational, uh, gets, gets blurred a little bit. Um, there's a lot of reasons that people don't wanna get medical cards that have medical needs, that would wanna use cannabis all the way from, you know, some of them are just too lazy, they don't know how to figure it out, or they don't wanna, they think they're gonna be on a list. Or they might be a, you know, a government official, a city official, possibly, you know, city councilperson, mayor, city manager, and they don't want people to know that they're, I'm just saying, right? I'm not gonna Davey Dave's, but, uh, we definitely have some clients in some other cities that, uh, we keep their information confidential. But it is a thing that happens about eighteen percent of the population, so, you know, do the math, but the, the.
Well, if it's medical, is it covered by HIPAA?
Right, no, it is, it's not. I don't think so. I don't know. Those debates, by the way, are happening in, uh, in Colorado about drug testing and other stuff. But I, I do think that there's, uh, there's, there's an argument that's been made about people who wanna have gun ownership in California. They don't wanna be on that registry. So people might really have these medical needs, but they don't, they don't wanna get a medical card. And then, you know, the other issue is all this revenue is, is, is bleeding out to, to Long Beach. In fact, the, the store that we have on the freeway is doing better than ever. I suspect some of it's just, you know, regular growth, but I do think there's a lot of people, um, coming from, uh, Bellflower. I had the guys pull the numbers before I came up here. We have hundreds and hundreds of, of, of Bellflower patients that are, uh, you know, utilizing the facility. It doesn't seem to, to make sense, but, you know, I think the main point is, going back even two thousand fifteen, sixteen, everybody knew they had to get a medical card in order to get cannabis. Now what's happened because of the state laws have changed, the recreational is available, and there's competing cities, the, the, the medical market is, is decimated. So it's like a realistic viable business. Of course, we're gonna stay here. We're gonna fight it out. We're gonna do our best. That's just what we are. We like to be here in Bellflower, whether we're losing money or, or making money, but the, the prospects are dim. So, you know, we would ask, you know, if, 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 uh, um, just as a survival mechanism, as access to the citizens, when people go to the black market, they're also buying, you know, unsafe product that you guys consider the recreational thing.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Gubbs.
So have you ever figured out what it is you've invested in Bellflower with the?
Yeah.
Yeah, your buil-, your buildings, your, your supplies, training, your help, uh, the deposits. Every time you come in here, we take something out of your back pocket.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's true. We're probably up around six million bucks and counting. So, I mean, we paid three point six million for the property. We put about one point one million into the build-out, uh, for the retail. We have an additional, uh, probably five, six hundred thousand and counting on the build-out for, uh, the manufacturing. I think the campus itself, we put in a huge two thousand amp upgrade. It's like another three, four hundred grand. We're losing forty thousand a month. We got probably two, three hundred thousand dollars in inventory. Usually we have thirty day, uh, net. But since we're not selling enough, we've had to basically buy all the inventory that's in there, salaries, that doesn't count interest, et cetera, et cetera, on the money. It's, it's, it's been substantial. We have a pretty big property to carry, so, you know, the, it, 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 it's been expensive. We believe in Bellflower. I say it every time I'm up here without blowing smoke. It's been the, uh, best place to work through, get through the building department. I'm glad they gave our guy here, the, the building guy Ray, he's a really fair, uh, good guy to deal with, so I was glad to see that. But yeah, it's been a, uh, it's expensive project.
All right, just wanted to reiterate what it is you've invested besides your sweat equity.
Yeah, I know. Well, you're giving me a little bit of heartburn, but thanks for reminding me. By the way, that doesn't count, like, I think there's three or four, no, four applications at twenty-five grand each, prepaid taxes, seventy grand, the, you know, the whole thing. So there's probably another couple hundred thousand dollars in taxes and fees and application fees and everything.
And if I remember right, when you bought the property, you couldn't get a federal bank to, to lend the money.
Yeah, so we're.
So you did private money at a higher price.
Yeah, we're paying about twenty grand a month to carry. It's about ten percent interest, yeah, so.
Ten percent interest?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll get your.
You're gonna do, yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sorry for the.
No, no worries.
The shuttle. Uh, um, just a quick question. Uh, again, I'm somewhat still on the learning curve of sorts. And, uh, uh, trying to get familiar with this whole industry, uh, because of this, uh, issue. Uh, your, uh, your customers that are medicinal, uh, carrier, you know, card carriers. And, uh, it's, I've been told that, uh, with that shrinking, then your product line would change. And would there, would there be a decent, a, a decrease in amount of medicinal product? Uh, because again, a doctor prescribes, is, is it a, is it off the shelf? Is it, is it, uh, is it a, a concoction, you know, filled to order?
I think something that naturally definitely happens is the, everything is less, including the medical. The more medically based, the higher CBD, just because, you know, we're, we're trying to survive and keep, you know, we don't, we're not, you know, our, our average sales is probably, depending on the day, anywhere from fifteen hundred to twenty-four hundred bucks a day. We're, you know, it's like, you know, one sixth or one tenth of all our other, uh, you know, every other store we have is, exceeds ten thousand dollars a day of average sales. So you don't keep as much product. You're trying to figure out ways to, you know, we're taking from one store to pay for another store. We're moving inventory around, so you, it definitely affects the overall number of brands you can carry and everything. Like, right now, I'm just guessing, maybe we have a hundred, a hundred fifty grand in inventory in there. Typically, we'll have four hundred thousand, but when you're moving the money a little bit faster, you can, you can carry a wider variety. So it's kinda happened since the onset of recreational. It was like, you know, ninety, ten, medical, eighty, twenty, seventy, thirty, then little by little, nobody's, you know, renewed their cards. Now we're down to, you know, of the actual people that come in the stores, uh, I know we, we just pulled it everywhere in Long Beach. It's about ten percent show their medical card. And they could get reduced taxes if they just took the time, uh, you know, to go in and show their card, they get a little bit, uh, lower tax rate. So, I mean, there's still incentive to do it and it's only ten percent of the active, you know, uh, patients and clients that we have are, are medical users. So there's definitely a large chunk of recreational, in quotes, uh, you know, patients that we see in Long Beach that used to have medical cards in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and now they just, you know, haven't renewed them.
But, uh, again, just sticking to the product, yeah, so you anticipate still the availability of whatever's necessary to deal with, with the medicinal, uh, group.
Yeah, I, we would have more.
Plus you have other stores, I mean, you know, and.
Yeah, we would have more. Yeah, the product line would be more, so if there's, cause recreational patients use, you know, typically, the, what's considered the more medicinal products has lower THC, less psychoactive effect and higher CBD. So the more people that we're seeing, the wider, wider product line we're gonna have, the, the broader we'll carry the brands because, you know, which is, it's just a little bit easier to do. So if with the add-on of recreational in Bellflower, we would have more of a, 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 a variety for the medical patients as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Um, my name's Priscilla Brown. Um, I've spoken several times about this. Um, when we all started this and you guys said, you know, we're gonna do medical only. And I know there's been changes. I understand that. Um, but it was this big, like, medical miracle for everybody and everybody was patients and everybody needed their, their medical marijuana, so that's why we were going down this road as far as the revenue and, and all that. And now we're here, um, looking at recreational. And I think, you know, um, a lot of these people that came in and made all these promises and I think some of that is because of the changes in the state and I think some of it is not. I think they made promises they couldn't keep. And I think that, um, you know, they came in saying, we've got all this money, we've got some, we're gonna spend money, we're gonna, and now we hear, well, gosh, I've invested this, I've invested that, and I put this in. You know, that's part of business. I mean, you knew when you came in here and you were gonna open distribution and growing or whatever, that you're gonna put this money into this. So what they put into it is what they put into it, is my opinion. So, um, but you do know this is going to bring more traffic in to the city. And the one that I think is really a big concern, and you know, this is just, um, not something I'm real happy about with, is the one you approved on Rose Street. It's across from a mobile home park where people live, next door to a multi-unit building where people live, where kids live. And there's gonna be increased traffic now on that street. And I don't think we can deny that, so just gonna cause a lot more traffic. And you've always said it's not gonna bring any more crime into the city, so I don't know. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. I don't know. But, you know, the big thing was, everybody needed their medicine. Everybody needed their medicine. And now we're going recreational, so I don't know. I mean, you guys know how happy I am with this. Um, we've had discussions, um, I've had discussions with Jeff. And I understand you're at a point where, um, you're looking at it as, uh, extra taxes. But I also know you're looking at other means of taxes. And I think if you're selling this as your big revenue now push, I think you're gonna have a hard time getting anybody to wanna approve any other taxes. Because now this is our gonna be, or the medical is gonna be our big thing. Now the recreational is gonna be our big thing. And when, when, how, how long is it gonna be when this ends? It's gonna end. We all know it's gonna end. Okay, we knew Long Beach was going, was recreational when we agreed the medical, so we knew that was gonna be an issue. You, you knew people were gonna go to Long Beach to get their recreational. They, and, you know, we were only gonna get medical. You knew that. And then when this illegal delivery is brought up, we see the same stunned faces we seen at so many other things that were brought up. So I hope you guys have done your research this time. And I hope you know what the impact with recreational is gonna be different than what it was with only medical. Because I seen the shocked look on the face, again, like, illegal delivery. So, um, I don't know, I seen that shocked look before. I'm seeing it again and it's a little bothersome. So, and, you know, like was already been brought up, and I brought it before, you've got all your dispensaries on one end of town. And we had the opportunity to put one in the middle of the town. And I'm just gonna put it out there. I think some of you didn't want it in your neighborhood. Sorry if that, if you don't like that. I think that's what it is. And because we knew this was gonna go recreational. We knew that. And, and I can't, you, you knew this was gonna be looked at. In fact, my husband asked this about a month or so ago, and I think we all knew this was coming. But, you know, we don't want it in our neighborhood. Well, you've put it in these other people's neighborhood and you've put it right in where people live, in the one location. So I just want you guys to think about that. I want you to think about how that's gonna impact them now that there's gonna be more traffic, cause you know recreational is gonna bring more traffic. And also I thought, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we were, all these locations were going to have an armed security guard out in front of their locations, outside of the locations, is what I recall. I have never seen a security guard, uh, the two that are open, I've never seen a security guard outside. Never. I sat at one of those places in the parking lot for twenty minutes. Nobody ever approached me to see why I was sitting there and not coming in to their store. That's a problem.
Mayor, may I interrupt?
Yes, go ahead.
I believe that the, the conditions was that they have an armed security guard onsite.
Onsite? Not, not outside?
Not outside, yeah. Yeah, right at the front doors you go in.
Okay, I recall a lot of the citizens when, on the marathon council meeting we had back in two thousand seventeen, I recall a lot of the, the residents over on Rose asking, now, now what are we gonna deal with? Are we gonna deal with people out sitting out in the cars, smoking their marijuana in our neighborhoods? Are we gonna deal with that? And it was like, no, no, oh, no, definitely we'll have people out there making sure those people are not sitting on the street in your neighborhood, smoking their marijuana in their cars. How are they gonna know it's happening if they're inside?
Is there an issue outside the dispensary that you know of?
That I know of?
Yeah.
No, because they're not doing very much business at this point.
All right, and I'm just checking with you.
But do you think, do you think recreational is gonna bring a little more traffic? I mean, I think we all do, right? This is why we're doing this. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here tonight. So I hope you guys just really, really put a lot of thought into this. Because the big thing was, and you guys all sat up here, and, you know, we're gonna do it for the poor people who need this for medical. That's what we heard. And you know I was here that night and I heard it and everybody else did. And now here we are.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, Mayor, is, uh, some operators coming up? We may wanna ask them the security question.
Uh, sure, um. No, go. I'm still short by about four because ten people raised their hands earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Scott Larson.
Hi, Scott.
Hello there, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Um, a couple of things, and I know you didn't wanna bring up, uh, things that have already been brought up, so I'll try and avoid all that. Um, you know, recreational usage is happening. It's just a matter of where are they gonna buy it? And I don't think whether we have it here or, or not, the amount of recreational usage that is taking place in the city is really gonna be unchanged. My thing that I wanna also kinda confirm is that the recreational and even the medicinal usage is supposed to be inside of private property. Uh, I wanna confirm that.
When you say inside private property, what do you mean?
They're not supposed to be in the park or out on the sidewalk.
Exactly.
And so if they're there.
And leave, okay.
Um.
That's the way it should be.
It, it, you know, I, I would encourage and would personally, you know, call the police, say, I don't know that they would necessarily cite these people, but I think they'll send them on their way for sure.
That's why I asked the question earlier, because if you notice something, someone who is consuming our product in the, uh, on the parking lot, we will call the attention of the operator.
And the operator should be calling and saying, you know, to them, one, if you continue, you're not gonna be able to apply here.
Right, exactly.
And two, we're gonna call the, the Sheriff's Department and.
That's where I was going earlier.
Yes. Uh, the one issue that'll have to be addressed, if this is, if this is an economic issue and it's a competition with the other cities, is are you gonna be dealing with the hours of operation? Because right now, it's till seven PM and the, and the competition is going till ten PM. And, you know, whether we like it or not, this is oftentimes an impulse buy. And so if they're, you know, if we're closing ours at seven.
You, you mean, you mean recreational is impulse buying?
Yeah, some of it, often it is, yes.
Okay.
And so, you know, at some point, you probably, whether you're gonna deal with it tonight or sometime in the future, the hours of operation is something you ought to be thinking about as well.
Okay.
And I haven't done any of this since the sixties and even then it wasn't too much, so, uh, but, uh.
Did you inhale?
Didn't inhale, yeah. You know, they say if you remember the sixties, you didn't live there. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Good to see you again. All right, anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Good evening, Anita.
Um.
Can you, can you sign in here?
Yeah. Going along with what Scott said, I was concerned also because, uh, I'm already having enough problems breathing with what's going on in my street. So am I gonna have to come out of a store somewhere here in Bellflower and somebody's out there puffing on a, on a, on pot? And I'm gonna have to breathe that now too, because I can't handle that. So my question to you is, if you increase the revenue, are you also going to now increase the police protection so that they can actually come out when we call in there's a problem? Or are we gonna get the same stuff we're getting with a lot of other things right now? Well, they'll get there when they can, cause they're busy.
Well, to answer your question, we still have, we're still getting the money that we expect at this point. So we're kinda behind in terms of the expected revenue.
So in other words, the answer is no, we'll just have to suffer.
Uh, well, not at this point. We'll, we'll try other means.
Okay.
Anita, you must be feeling better. You haven't coughed all night.
No, I haven't. I put on my jacket and I've been sucking on cough drops.
You're doing well.
Yes, I'm doing better.
That's good.
Thanks.
Look, can we, can we let the others speak first? Anyone else?
Oh, Anita. You were doing so well.
Don't be. So you jinxed it, don't you? Okay, Rosella, what's your follow-up question? You have a question, or?
Well, no, you had asked me if I had, if I knew of any problems.
No, if you noticed any, anyone consuming products.
At the dispensaries, correct?
Yeah.
Not at the dispensaries.
In the parking lot?
In the parking lot, everywhere.
Okay, so that was my question.
At the parks, on the walking trail, uh, walking down the street, going by my house.
No, you're...
Everywhere.
You were talking about security guards?
Yes.
At the dispensary, that's why I asked the question.
Okay, but yeah, you did ask at the dispensary, correct?
In relation to that.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought you asked, but then something was brought up about something else, about them in the parking lots or something. So I just wanted to clarify that, no, not at the dispensaries, but yes, in the parks and everywhere else.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that, if someone noticed about, see someone consuming products at the parking lot of the dispensary, tell us, or tell the operator, because it's in violation of the CUP.
Okay, but like in the parks, I mean, if you call the cops, let's be real, they're not gonna come. How long's it gonna take them to come out, and tell these people to leave? That's, that's just not gonna happen, that's a low priority call, and they're gonna be in their car driving high by then.
Time out, we're talking about the facilities here, okay?
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Come up here.
Hi there, my name is John Bachelor, and I'm the manager for the Medicine Woman Dispensary on Rose Street. And I thought it would just come up for a moment to address this community members' concerns regarding our dispensary on Rose Street. We have made many attempts over the past couple of months to reach out to the mobile home park across the street, and next door, we have made several friendships with Raymond, who, whose children get lollipops from us, I think, just about every other day. And Nellie, who lives in the mobile home park, who, we help her with cat food for the strays that she is trying to protect in the neighborhood. And then, in addition to that, we are in the streets every day cleaning them, and sweeping them. And that's just not our property, that is the street itself, between ourselves and Lakewood. So as a manager, and I have a couple of my team here as well, and the proprietors are here as well, I just wanna reassure the community, and the community members, and the board, and the council, that we are here to be a part of the community, and we are here to thrive with the community, and we are here to support the community. And in terms of video surveillance, we do have video surveillance of our parking lot, so we do see every customer that drives in and parks. We watch them very closely, but also at the same time, we allow them the opportunity to finish a phone call if they're on the phone, or talk with someone before they come into the store, or after they go out. We don't necessarily knock on their windows, and ask that they leave within thirty seconds, or if they take a few minutes to get out of their car before they come into the store, we don't harass them, but we're watching them very closely, so...
So you're the manager of Medicine Woman?
That's correct.
Can you tell us, can you walk us through the environment when a customer drives in? Can you tell us the scenario? Where does he or she parks, and then how does he come to the door, how is he greeted, things like, can you give us, can you walk us through?
Yeah, you know, the security in the parking lot is under fifteen cameras, I think, ten, somewhere, just for the parking lot, so... When someone drives in, they're being observed by the office, and by the security team themselves. So three people now have their eyes on that car. We have six parking lots in the front, and about eight in the back. People choose where they wanna park. From there, when they come in, they're greeted by a host or hostess, and in the front room is also a security officer. Where we're having the biggest problem is that, as the other gentleman said, we just can't get customers to go through that process. They just don't wanna do it. So we do lose about ten to fifteen people per day, that will walk out right at that point.
Okay, let's skip that for a moment, I'll go back to that. So in terms of the purchase of the items, so they show a card, they verify the card, and then they buy, walk us through in terms of the process.
So if they do have a medical card, and they are registered, then they just check in with the host and hostess, and then once there is an opening for them to go into the dispensary, the security guard will escort them through a trapdoor into the dispensary.
So there's a security guard onsite?
There is a security guard that's twenty-four-seven, we have twenty-four-seven security that's located right inside the front door. And that security guard is at any time looking at fifty cameras.
Okay.
So he is more aware of what's happening on Rose Street than any of us are. And he has strict protocols that he follows, if anything is out of the ordinary. Unfortunately, we have had the police come to our property for two accidental alarm calls. And one of the feedbacks from the security team was how quickly they were there. They were there in, under a minute, from the alarm going off accidentally. Which left me really reassured that the police department here in Bellflower are well aware of what is happening in, with these businesses, and I think are on heightened alert in terms of the street and the safety. 'Cause I felt very safe when the police department came, and their response time was very quick. Any other questions?
After the purchase, so usually, usually in a bag, sealed bag, or?
Yeah, so once the customers go inside, and the budtender serves them, we're required by law to provide the product in a childproof Ziploc bag, what we call an exit bag.
Okay, so once the customer purchased the item, then he or she leaves the facility?
That's correct.
Does your security guard notice anyone kind of loitering, or consuming products in the parking lot?
No, we've really not had that problem.
You haven't?
No, and since May, I've had one customer that stayed for a while, and after about fifteen minutes, we did go and ask her to leave. And just explain to her nicely that it was a requirement of the law, that she not stay anywhere near the dispensary.
So only on one...
And she understood, and she left.
Only on one instance?
That's correct.
Okay, now going back now, I cut it up earlier about the card, the medical, the medicinal card?
Yes, sir.
How much does it cost to get it? What's the cost?
It's thirty-nine dollars for the customer. And so, the, and when we first opened, that was a one-hundred percent deal breaker. The customers just are not willing to spend the money when they can go down the street, and not have to spend the thirty-nine dollars.
And what is the process to get a card?
The process is about a five-to-seven minute process, where we connect them with a third-party company. The third-party company puts them in contact with a physician, that they contact over the phone. They speak, they have a conversation. The physician validates the claim, and then from there, issues the requirement, or doesn't, based off of that conversation.
So it takes them about five minutes?
Takes about five to seven minutes.
Okay, alright. Now, someone earlier provided information about credit? I was trying to understand what the credit means.
Yeah, well, some of the kind of creative solutions that dispensaries have come up with is to offer a store credit for the same value as the medical requirement, so...
The card, you mean?
Yes, so what they're saying to the customer is, is, "If you spend thirty-nine dollars and go through this process, we'll give you a store credit for thirty-nine dollars, which you can use for product." That turns people that are looking to purchase and spend the thirty-nine dollars, but it only works for those people. For the people that just wanted to come and spend twenty dollars on that day, because that's their budget, that doesn't work. And for the people that don't want to go through the list process, like the other gentleman was saying, it doesn't work. We have a lot of objections over the, just kind of the insecurity of what's going to happen with that information, whether or not they'll be able to buy guns, or if that's going to have restrictions. So, there's just a lot of unknown information amongst the community about what is involved with a medical license, and what isn't.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead.
So are you talking about the difference between a temporary permit and a medical license?
No, I'm talking about an individual-use medical letter license that a customer would receive, not any...
That's a full medical license, it gives them the taxes off on the...
It's my understanding that once they, it's a two-step process to get the taxes off, that they first have to go through the medical license process in the store, and then they have to take that license to the health department, go through another set of criteria.
Talking about a temporary permit?
I'm just talking about the one-year certified metal, medical letter that they receive from this third-party company.
That's for my own edification, because there's a distinction between the two, the temporary and the medical.
So in the long run, if they're kind of savvy, they can recoup the cost? Or more than that, if you're giving them credit of thirty-nine dollars?
Well, so what's happening is, the stores are taking the hit, and so it's just been a loss of...
Okay, got it. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Customer member Coops, go ahead.
So I've got, you mentioned that, what would you say your average sale would be to a customer coming in? What do they spend, average?
Our average sale is probably between forty and eighty dollars. We have a lot of customers that come in that just wanna try to hit a forty-dollar price point, and if they're not looking for the forty dollar, they'll typically end somewhere around eighty, on average.
So overall, fifty to sixty, if you average it all out?
Yeah, I mean, it's been really hard to say, because the traffic has been so low.
Now, you mentioned that you lose ten to fifteen folks that come in, they discover the situation, and they leave.
Yes, sir.
And you think that you probably could be able to convert them into a sale?
Oh, without a question, if we didn't have the medical requirement in place, the customers would be customers today. We're losing them to the process, we're losing them to the budget that they don't wanna spend on that. If we, if they're acceptable to the process, then the second requirement, or the second challenge is, "But I was only gonna spend twenty dollars." So it's another obstacle in that process.
But if you do, let's say we, you pick up those ten folk that now wanna purchase, and their average sales is sixty dollars, that's only six hundred dollars a day. That's not a lot of money for the operation you have there. Are you looking for something else to come online?
We'll just take into consideration their amount of frequency, because that same customer will come to you two, or three, or five times a week. So, we're, you know, we have an opportunity to be their local store, and we're losing that opportunity to other cities, because of the medical requirement.
Okay.
Those customers come to us repeatedly.
But you can see in the math I was looking at, it wouldn't be a huge amount of money if you were just looking at the ten or fifteen people, six to nine hundred dollars a day, if it's a sixty-dollar average sale.
Yeah, well, I'm only going from the medical traffic that we've received so far, the medical traffic that we've received since the, we've been tracking it since the store opened, so we're, right now, only trending at about twenty-five to thirty people per day, overall. And so we're losing about a third of that out the door.
Do you find that the guys on the corner with flipping the signs?
Yes, sir.
Does that help you?
It's guerrilla marketing, I'm pursuing...
It doesn't help us, by the way.
It's, it's been a temporary solution that we put it in place to help us address the medical challenge.
Okay.
When we first opened, and traffic, foot traffic was as slow as it was, and we kind of saw the community feedback regarding the medical letter requirement, that's when we put the street spinners in place. We also, we also identify whether or not customers are coming, and based off of the street spinners, fifty percent of our foot traffic is coming from the street spinners.
Okay.
So it's about ten to fifteen people a day that we're getting from them. They're not intended to be forever, they are intended to only be until we go recreational.
I have found that that was the only blowback I've gotten so far on cannabis in Bellflower, is the street spinners.
Yeah, no, we've spoken to the city about the street spinners, we did...
You have every right to do it.
Yes.
But I'm just telling you in perception.
No, and we understand that, we did move and remove a street spinner from Clark Street, which was a city request, and we were happy to oblige with that. And then we also, we also agreed not to have any street spinners during school let-out hours. We're happy to do that. So right now, we just have them on Lakewood Boulevard, and that's where they'll, they'll stay until they're no longer.
I think one of our concerns is that the whole town will become one big cannabis street spinner.
Well, if we're recreational, we won't need to have the street spinners, because we'll have the foot traffic, so... I'll make a deal with you, you make us recreational, and I will reallocate the street spinners to another job.
Alright, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bachelor.
Walked right into that one, didn't you?
I'm sorry, Mr. Bachelor, Mr. Bachelor, I'm sorry.
One more question.
He wants to be a street spinner.
You want to leave on a high note.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bachelor. Just quickly, again, you referenced two incidents of false alarms with the sheriffs. That's been the extent of dealing with the sheriff?
That's been the only extent, and they were silent alarms, they weren't, they were the little silent alarm buttons that we have hidden around the store. So it wasn't even anything that anybody even heard, or, but we had several police officers that showed up, and and, yeah, there was, that was the only incident that we've had.
And should this move forward, and you said increase foot traffic, regular visits, and so obviously, that would result in increased volume, increased numbers of customers. And you said you have one guard inside, just monitoring screens?
We have twenty-four-hour security that's based off of our square footage, and our square footage right now is just a retail store, so there is one guard there at all times, yes. As the building grows, and the facility changes, and evolves, there will be the additional layering in.
Consideration for, or maybe a requirement?
It's already, it's already being planned, but the phase two and phase three of our building is not complete, so that second security officer won't come into play until those areas are complete.
I see, it's layered, depending on your...
It's based off of the completion of the project, yes, sir.
Interesting, alright, Mr. Mayor, could I have Mr. Lewis come back and respond to those same questions? Thank you, Mr. Bachelor. If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
A question regarding the security?
First question was sheriff report, sheriff visits, incidences?
We did have, we did have one, our security system that we've just learned from over the years, not 'cause we're smart, because they've got us a few times in other vicinities. We have an onsite monitoring, so there was three people that came over the fence, I think it's about a week ago, more or less, maybe a week and a half ago, and then they triggered the alarm, and then the guy can move the camera, there's somebody sitting there watching all our dispensaries, then they hit the alarm, they call the police. When the alarm went off, the guys took off, you could see the police showing up on camera, but there was, there was no incident. It was basically an attempted robbery, but we have really good security, we just learned over the years, if you don't have somebody watching, sitting on the TV, a couple of things happen. One, you get the false alarms, or two, the managers are all sleeping, it's three, four AM, and the response time is slow, because, you know, generally in the bigger cities, they just assume the alarms are false. Whereas if there's a guy sitting in front of a television, or a monitor, watching the live feed of the video, and he says, "Hey, there's suspects onsite", then that's a high priority call, and the police get there quickly. But other than that, we haven't had any issues of people smoking. If anybody opens their bag before they leave the property, we ban them for life, we're very, very strict on this. I know the one woman mentioned she hadn't seen our security guard, we don't parade him out on Artesia, we're set back, so he kinda wanders in the front a little bit, and then walks around in the lobby, but we do have twenty-four-hour security there.
It's one guard now?
One guard right now, yeah. As we get busier in some of the other places, we do have two, sometimes one in the front, one in the back, it just depends, it's a really big place. Ideally, probably, we would, you know, like to do two as we get busier.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I wanted to add one thing to Mr. Coops' calculation. The gentleman was just talking about people that get sent away that day.
Right.
The amount of people that don't come, or don't even bother, is really where we're losing out. The amount of people is just a tangible thing that you can get that day, but there is, you know, in the hundreds, is my opinion, you know, a hundred to three hundred people that we're losing, you know, every day.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Lewis? Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
The other operator, I think it was Medicine Woman, that mentioned about the hours that is Bellflower closes at seven, and Long Beach is open to ten o'clock at night, is that right?
Uh, Long Beach is open to nine?
Nine, okay.
It's probably, allegedly, in the next month or two, gonna be ten, is the, looks like the political win. Santa Ana is ten PM.
And it's open, and what about weekends?
It's open on Sundays, yeah, till, twenty-four days, or twenty, or seven days a week, till nine PM, Santa Ana is till ten PM. And I'm glad you brought that, the really important hour for us, especially if guys are getting off... And I'm glad you brought that. The really important hour for us, especially if guys are getting off work, seven PM is, is really, really tight. We do, uh, more business, uh, you know, post-work hours. So just each one of those hours is, is really, really important. I don't know the exact math on it, but just from kind of stepping in and seeing what the numbers are and then coming back later, I'd say probably we do, you know, fifty percent of our business between six and nine, six and ten o'clock. That's the, uh, the rush. And the thing that I always say, you know, the, the illicit market never closes. So if guys get to Bellflower and they're here and it's, 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 you know, seven fifteen, that doesn't mean that they're not going to, uh, try and find cannabis, you know. Nine times out of ten, they're going to either, you know, go to Long Beach or, or do it illicitly. They, they never close. So we would love to have, you know, nine, nine PM or, or, or longer.
Okay, yeah, that was it.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. So I don't know the habits of cannabis users, but if, when it was indicated it's an impulse buy. So that means that when you have a craving for cannabis, you then acquire it. It's not like when you go to a liquor store and buy a six-pack of beer, put it in your refrigerator, and then when you get thirsty, you go get a six, uh, one of the bottles and go sit down and drink it. Do you find that people do not store their stuff? They go and buy it as they need it? Or do they...
I think it's probably similar to, to alcohol. I would even make the argument that alcohol might be a little more of a, uh, impulse buy because, you know, I think typically cannabis users have a fairly set amount on how much they're going to use. I think sometimes drinkers, I don't want to get too philosophical, they might think they're going to have two or three drinks and end up at eight or nine. I think generally, I, I think generally, I mean, you know, I've been guilty of the same thing myself.
Just one more.
Yeah, you go to have two, you go to have two or three, you end up at eight or nine. I think it's very rare, uh, for a cannabis user to think like, oh, I might smoke, uh, you know, one or two joints and they end up at eight or nine. So I would say, it's just typically, no, I'm being serious.
Well, this is an education, actually. And I'm wondering about the buying habits, you know. So at seven o'clock, they're all good because they bought at five o'clock because they knew their needs for the rest of the evening.
Yeah, I, I think typically people probably buy for the week. It depends on how heavy, uh, a user they are. Generally, I think people like to come after work. We have some people that come, um, you know, before work. You know, typically, the really good sales are on Friday night and on Saturday. But I'd say generally, after work is the, the, the main time that people will come in and, and chop. But I think as a general thing, let's say eighteen percent of the population, they say is, uh, will use cannabis, you know, multiple times in a month, I think most of those people kind of know, uh, how much they're going to use and they plan ahead accordingly. Of course, there's always an exception. But I would take the counterargument and say that alcohol is more of a, uh, you know, who knows? But maybe could even be more of an impulse buy than, than cannabis.
Do you find that your consumer comes in by themselves or as a group or as a husband and wife? Or I picture individuals by themselves doing the transaction, but maybe I'm wrong.
I think it's a lot different. Like our Belmont Shore store is because we got a lot of foot traffic down there and it's on Second Street. It's a lot different, uh, demographic and they, you know, sometimes they're curious. They walk by. I seeing more and more, um, actually, our demographic there is, is interesting. It's, it's really old. It's, it's, uh, you know, I would say, you know, probably well over, uh, you know, fifty percent of our clients are, are, are over sixty. I see young kids...
They are really old.
No, I, I don't, I don't mean it like that, but old, older than, older than what you would, uh, suspect, right? I think the, the general, uh, like, we had the, we had the mayor come over to our shop and he saw a few of his constituents and he was surprised at, uh, he knew a couple of them and he was surprised that they were, you know, with, uh, a little bit older and that, uh, they were, you know, respectable members of the, uh, community. I, I could see him. He goes, oh, that guy, whoa, I didn't think, you know, I was like, you know, so I, I think there's more and more, it's getting de-stigmatized. I think, you know...
Did he inhale?
I think the mayor, I, I don't know. But, uh, you know, more and more, it's getting de-stigmatized, I think, slowly but surely. I also see a lot of younger people, like, I've given some of my, uh, my parents and, and, and their friends, um, like the higher CBD stuff. I don't think they're, we're even aware of what it is. I think as people get educated and you have, you know, three to four to one, CBD to THC, there's no psychoactive quality and they find this stuff and they're like, wow, I didn't even know this exists or tinctures and different stuff. So I think there's a lot of people that are, you know, maybe my generation or a generation down, bringing in their parents or grandparents and they're finding this stuff and it's really useful. You know, another thing that I would, I would say that's important, that there's a lot of studies, you know, coming out about, uh, the opioid use. In every single state and municipality where they've done a study where cannabis has been legal for an extended period of time, opioid use is usually down twenty to twenty-five percent. So I think that's, you know, an important thing to, to, to consider when, you know, debating, you know, the, the do less harm between the, the, the two things and the recreational use.
And the reason I ask that is, we talked about traffic and how much involvement there would be in some of the places that we've established. Uh, you know, if they come alone, if there's, uh, cars, excessive amount of cars, you know, the people put three in a car and go order one at a time, you know?
The really good thing about our property and Medicine Woman too, all the ones, they all have really good parking. I mean, ours is set in the back. We have a hundred, uh, parking spots. We could handle a lot more traffic. We don't see really any more than your typical, uh, retail business. Most retail businesses do about the same amount of business as we do. So it's not, we might have a little bit higher average, uh, purchase price and everybody thinks that cannabis is some get-rich-thing and everybody's making money. It's just like any other business. You got to run it well. You got to sell a good product. You got to cut costs and, and, uh, you know, run it, run a tight ship. So I think generally, you know, people do come by themselves, but also come together, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Oh, one more.
I'm going to stay this time, yeah.
Uh, back to the, the security plan.
Yes, sir.
The security that you have in place is, is that the plan of originally when you were going to open up with, uh, you know, when medical marijuana was supposed to be the big volume? I guess what I'm trying to say, you have the security in place for the same amount of volume as, as would be if it was switched to recreation?
Yeah, I mean...
Or do you need to tune that up?
I, it's basically the same. I mean, all the, it's, it's the same thing. I think the only thing would be if, if the volume kicked up a lot, then we would bring on an additional security guard. They also act as somebody who could kind of shuffle people, you know, in and out. So it, it doesn't really change anything. It's just going to in, increase the traffic. If, if I would have made a bet in two thousand sixteen, when we kind of started this process, we would be doing, you know, approximately eight to ten thousand a day, seeing two hundred to three hundred people. I assume if recreational goes, hopefully we'll be somewhere in there or a little bit more. So it's nothing different than what we originally planned for. I think the thing that surprised every thing, everybody, myself included, every industry expert, uh, or anybody who would have made a prediction, I just don't think that anybody could have predicted that the medicinal market would have been, you know, decimated that much. So, you know, I think it's a little unfair, uh, in, in industry that's so dynamic, you know, people coming up here, uh, you know, judging, you know, how, how the thing unfolded and, and it's, it changed so much to say that, you know, bad decisions were made or whatever. I, I just think it's, it's, it's a very, uh, tough thing to predict. And one more thing I'd like to say, they said the industry might be gone shortly. I would beg to differ that with that. We, we plan on being here for a while.
With regards to the security, do you see that the security is there for, that's a bad choice words of business operation, but is there to protect the business more than the consumers? Or there to protect the regular public against the lunatics?
Yeah, I mean, generally, I think that like robbing a cannabis business is just a bad crime to do in the middle of the day. I think mostly it happens at, you know, wee hours of the night by people who are ill-equipped. It's not a common thing. That's, it's a miscon, a misconception, right? We don't keep a lot of, uh, you know, cash on-site. Also, you know, they're, they've also done studies on, um, cannabis businesses and the crime rate goes down because you have security on-site or security in the area. We're not out in the street, but in other places, you know, we have a rough, uh, kind of a rougher area in Stockton and Sacramento. And there's actually been crimes that were occurring unrelated to the dispensary that were, were stopped on the streets. So I think for the most part, the security, you know, cuts down on the general crime. And in addition to that, it's, it's, it's good to have somebody there with a gun because it's a deterrent or somebody on-site. But it's, it's nothing that's ever happened to us. It's all stuff that happens in the middle of the night. They try to get in like any other business.
That was it, Mayor?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Peter?
It's because of Medicine Woman. I have a question. Um, he says they put him in contact with a doctor. Who pays a doctor? And how can they make a determination whether you qualify for marijuana based on a phone interview? Because I don't think you can make a determination on the phone whether somebody qualifies for marijuana. And from the marijuana, because it's ethical, plus the marijuana issue is that, how many, depending on who paying it, how many times has that doctor said, no, they don't qualify?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah. I'm just because he brought it up, that's why.
We could find out. We can add for, for you.
Okay, thanks.
It's a good question, though. Okay, anyone else? All right, we're good. All right, so we've heard you, so we'll talk about it. All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I think, uh, recreation is, uh, where we need to be. I also, um, the reason I was asking the security questions was I, the security plans were gone over in my head with my colleagues like eighteen months ago. And, uh, there were some questions that came out here tonight that I wanted to make sure that's what I remembered. I think the business owner is apt to put in more security when needed, when they want to protect what they got. They do handle a lot of cash and product and that's a, it's a, it's a, it's a business. That's why we have security there. Yeah, I was concerned, we're trying to do this to save the industry, save the city's revenue because it's been about the money. Um, I would look, wondered if we need to revisit the, the hours either now or at another later time. If we're doing this and Long Beach has got it, you know, two miles away, uh, another store that's, uh, has, you know, competition, at least I would like to see that we match the same hours, not doing anything more, but at least match hours of this routing city. And that's my discussion. I'd like to hear what you guys want to say.
Sure, thank you. Congressman Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, here we are. Um, it's, uh, been a, uh, I mean, these times are changing and it's, uh, been some challenging times here for the community. Um, I mean, like, uh, we don't need to go over the history of how this all came about with the state voters and so on, so on. But, um, when I took the seat last December, I, I did, uh, state that I'd seek the big picture on, on things. And, uh, uh, I wanted to ensure due process. I always wanted to keep an open mind and always, uh, made sure that I wanted to hear both sides. So I'm glad both sides showed up today and raised issues and reconfirmed, uh, uh, some of the standards and so on. I mean, we have an industry here that's, that's emerged and, uh, and it's obviously, again, holding right online to its dynamic, uh, nature. And, um, uh, you know, this, this, this flux of, of, uh, of the use, uh, obviously is, you know, I mean, my head was scratching at times. And I probably have some more white hair about this, but, uh, that's life. And, um, but I did want, uh, to make sure that, uh, uh, this would be well thought out and, uh, you know, reviewed and evaluated. So with that, and I, I did quite a bit of homework and I did research. I reviewed a lot of stuff online. Of course, you know, you believe everything online, of course. Uh, but there, but there was a lot of articles, um, uh, reports. Uh, I checked into these places. Uh, I've, uh, contacted other cities regarding their regulations and their oversight. Uh, you know, uh, spoke with them about, you know, permitted versus unpermitted, how, how much resources are taken for both. Uh, I've had conversations with my family, you know, and friends and, you know, community members. And, um, uh, but, uh, I've heard a lot from other, you know, communities. And, uh, um, you know, there is this discussion of fiscal impact and, and, and yes, it's real. And, uh, uh, this is, uh, you know, we thought the economy is great, but it, it's always in flux and, and we were challenged, uh, with, uh, with our revenues. And obviously, you know, with, and I, you know, compliment, uh, my, my, you know, colleagues with the budget here recently. And, and I worked for a number of other cities and this is the quickest, most efficient way to deal with the budget. And, uh, I definitely would have preferred, you know, two-year versus one-year budgets. But, um, um, and I, and I have stated in, in, in past meetings in regards to cannabis that it's not all about the money, but money is important. I mean, you know, financial, uh, you know, sustainability is a, is a critical factor and it factors in in, in making a decision. And, uh, we need services for the community and it costs money. So, uh, we need to, uh, you know, put everything on the balance and weigh it all out, you know, hear it out and weigh it all out. Uh, you know, public safety's been raised tonight and, uh, um, obviously that's, that's on everybody's mind. And, uh, and I want to thank, uh, the operators tonight and also the community members for voicing their concerns on this and what they do. And it, it, it's something that, uh, appears to also be in flux. As, as something grows, something's going to follow with, with, uh, the issue of security. So there may be, you know, there'll be likely more guards if, if, uh, there's, uh, you know, increased traffic, increased number of customers, visits and so on, uh, longer hours, whatever it may be. Because, uh, this is the first step. This is just addressing the policy. Down the road, we're going to deal with a code amendment. So as we deal with, uh, if there's more, the need for public safety, uh, if there's, um, uh, hours to be compatible with other communities, uh, you know, because I've always stand firm too on, on the issue of, uh, uh, fair economics is just like we have restaurants in town that serve alcohol on sale. And generally, I like to see if it's all the same hours. Everyone should have a fair shake at that and, 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 uh, that there's, that there should be consistency. So, um, I've always put, uh, public safety, uh, again, high on the list. And, um, uh, it was mentioned again tonight, um, uh, you know, permittees, uh, know what's happening out there and, uh, they know about those that aren't permitted. And, uh, uh, by, uh, knowing, you know, who's been approved, it's going to definitely help out on how we address those that aren't approved. So, um, and again, we all should be diligent, uh, to put a halt to the illegal activities. Again, you know, report it, whatever it may be, uh, but in, um, um, and again, uh, this is going to be, uh, another great challenge. So, um, um, but I wanted, some of my questions were, uh, addressing, uh, you know, quality control. And, uh, uh, again, this is the difference between permittees versus those that aren't permitted. And, uh, permitted, we're going to know about the qua, the potential quality of a product. And, uh, we're going to, you know, it's going to be safe, uh, and so on. I also, uh, I think I found some assurance hearing a question about, well, my, one of my questions about the medicinal and if it, if it changes from more, uh, from, you know, medicinal to recreational, there should be, um, uh, there's still the product line that's available. And I just don't want to see those who need it and the city's behind that, uh, from a medicinal standpoint, that they just don't lose their product and it's out there, so. And as the business changes, uh, uh, it'll, uh, move accordingly. I also, uh, uh, want to ensure public education out there. And if, uh, uh, we revisit the code and, and address any needs for greater public education, I think we're going to look at the operators to step up and, and provide that. If it's, if it's additional monetary contribution or, uh, educational events out there, um, so be it. So, um, um, I think, uh, again, um, you know, the regulations, uh, uh, are important, um, and, uh, we, I know I wasn't part of the original, but I was part of the second, uh, step. And, uh, um, I, I supported medicinal. And so with that, I'd rather, you know, bring the use out in the open, and have it be addressed through conditions, requirements, regulations. And so, and again, money factors in, public safety, education, you know, quality control, and so on. So I think I've spent a good amount of time doing the research, still learning on it. If, you know, I'd probably, somebody to put a bunch of stuff up there, and I had to pick out, I'd probably, I'd probably fail on, on some of that, so. But, so with that, I think I'm going to go on the side of moving forward with recreational, and regulate it. It's got to be regulated, and we're going to see it again. Again, this process, total process, is discretionary, so every year, we gotta, you know, revisit all the permittees. And, you know, they better be doing their job if that's, if that's what we're going to hold them to, so. It's a dynamic process, I want to make sure it's, it's open, everybody has a right to speak on it, both sides. And, you know, it's, it's there. Yeah, I mean, personally, you know, it, it may not be the, you know, the ultimate thing for, for, you know, land use. Again, being a land use planner for many years, you know, but as a planner, I saw, again, I reiterate the big picture, and everything, you know. We were always told that you couldn't prohibit something, yes, the, the state law allowed us to, but there was a need, and so we responded, and, you know, we gave it its due process, and we chose to move forward with that. So not, not to belabor, I'm sorry, not to belabor this any further, I think right now I'm ready to, to vote on it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've heard the testimony this evening, I'll be honest with you, when we started this process two, three years ago, it was kind of, again, I graduated from high school in nineteen sixty-nine, fifty years ago, and the discussion about marijuana and cannabis and pot was lively then, and here it is fifty years later, and now it's been approved by the state voters, California voters. But the cities have a chance to determine how they're going to use that vote. One of the meetings we had at the Qantas Hall, there was one of our friends, Tom Minahan, who was a physician's son, who told the story of how he had a little granddaughter, it was the physician's daughter, it was Tom Minahan's granddaughter. And she was nine years old, and she would have as many as thirty seizures a month. And they talked about how this cannabis was able to control and change that. In fact, I talked to Tom last Friday at the meeting, I said, "How's your granddaughter doing?", and she hadn't had a seizure in three years. And it was due to the fact that she had access to medicinal cannabis, and that changed my mind as to whether or not there was a place in our society, and in Bellflower, for us to be able to have the chance to offer medicinal cannabis to those who needed it. There's even a theory out there, I'm not totally subscribed to it, that the rank-and-file medical industry has prohibited cannabis from going forward, because they wanted to always sell the pharmaceutical drugs, which are much more expensive. When you take the, to come to us tonight, you all know the, the journey we've been on here with trying to figure out where the dispensary should be, who should operate them, how many should there be, what should their activities be, what the security should be, what are their hours of operation? Those are all things that we've talked about throughout the last three, four years. And at this point, I really believe that we've come up with operators, the, the best of the best. We've had some misstarts, we've had to revoke some permits, we've given some back, we've never given them to others. But I really believe that the conscientiousness of those that currently hold permits to distribute and to dispense, and also to cultivate and manufacture. But I think that through the process, we've gotten some quality corporations, individuals, and personnel to conduct these businesses that are going to be held accountable. We all worry about the security part of it, I know that when we talked about how many security guards, one in the building, one outside the building, that's all important, and we're going to revisit that to make sure that it's still economically viable and safe to do those things. But in the long run, I, economically, I would think we would put this in the category of a sin tax. You know, that we're not taxing those that live here in town unless they want to do something, buy liquor, or cannabis, or cigarettes, or something else. So you need not participate in this unless you decide you elect to have that kind of activity. It's always difficult for us to come through here and say we're going to raise all the property taxes, or we're going to raise all the sales taxes, or we're going to raise a utility tax. And John pointed out earlier that when we made that commitment five years ago, for a utility tax of two percent, that it would sunset in five years, and we kept that commitment. That was about a million five a year that we suddenly eliminated from our budget because it didn't have the income stream anymore. And we were going to try to use this cannabis tax to replace that, and in fact, it was supposed to exceed the one point five and get up to maybe two, two and a half million dollars a year. After having seen what happened with our first six months of operation, it's not working. So I need to step up, just like, and, and you do this with, you know, you put a lot of thought into this. We're up here trying to do the best we can to make Bellflower better. That's the whole reason why we do this job, not for any other reason, is to make Bellflower better, in keeping the taxes right, to keep us safe. Who wants to live here if you don't feel safe? We want to keep those squad cars on the, on the road, we want to make sure we have implementation to continue to grow all of our public safety revenues. And this, to me, looks like something that can be done, in, in a way that we can still control the environment, and not put our citizens at risk. And I'm not proud of being referred to Bellflower, they've got cannabis, and Downey doesn't have, and Lakewood doesn't. I don't bring this up to my relatives, a bunch of Dutch reform people, because they throw me out of the house, you know, because I know their thoughts. But when you're in a position of responsibility like we are, you need to look at what is going to be able to maintain the financial respectability and efficiency of our city. And this, to me, looks like it's right there in front of us. One of the things that we talked about when we got into this business was that how Bellflower in the past has always been in such a place that we were always the last one to the table with redevelopment, with transit. We were never quite in front of the curve. And so this council says, you know, "We're not going to do that anymore, we're going to be leaders in the area, we're going to do something to make Bellflower better." You can see some of that manifested itself on the Boulevard. I mean, we've got an In-N-Out coming in, we've got the things going on with the event center, we've got a parking structure, we've got more things coming down, we've got all these moving in, you see that building down there. All that comes because people trust what's going on in Bellflower, and we don't want to do anything to ever betray that trust. We, as a council, most of the time, see what needs to be done and vote unanimously, we'll see what happens tonight. But I'm just trying to reassure the public that what we're trying to do with this cannabis is maintain and improve the situation in Bellflower, in such a way that it's not offensive, it's not dangerous, it's not derogatory, it's, it's something positive. And with that, I would promise to vote tonight for recreational. I really don't want to, Ray, get into it unless we talk about it later, I think this is a big chunk. I understand the need to look at the hours of operation, because I think that's important. If the best two hours of the day are from seven to nine or ten, and we're leaving that on the table, that needs to be addressed. But I think we need to take baby steps on trying to address that, and as we go farther into it, we can consider that. But I don't want to muddy the water too much at one point in time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me just state some points here in terms of addressing some of the previous concerns. Meetings ago, we were asked a question, a resident of Bellflower, point blank, she was making a comment, and she kind of predicted that recreational marijuana is going to be coming to Bellflower. And I said that we haven't made a decision, because I just want to point out that we, as a body, we cannot make a decision off the cuff, so to speak. It has to be agendized, and I would like to say that tonight is the right time to ask that kind of question. We went through a, a long learning process, how we got here, it's been a long journey, and one of the, one of the things that we learned is, and had, if I were, if we were able to turn back the clock, we would have imposed some kind of, what we have, what we have done, starting generally this year, is to impose liquidity damages. And I think that's what Mr. Butts was referring to. So that's now in place in terms of new licenses, new MCBPs being granted by the city. And also, I want to ask operators to, to be more vigilant, if you see anything that is illegal activities going on in Bellflower, competition, your illegal competition, please work with us, because we need to work together to get rid of these illegal activities. It's legal in, in Bellflower, as far as medical concern, medical marijuana is concerned as of today. And for the operators, let me just remind you that you need to keep in compliance with your CUP, because if you don't, if you evaluate any of the conditions in the CUP, then the CUP can, can be revoked. There is a process to revoke that CUP. As far as revenue, revenue stream is concerned, I know that marijuana, medical marijuana has been a major source of revenue for us, in terms of placing the, what used to be a utility users tax, which we have forgotten as we promised to the voters. So we met, we kept our promise, and we, we got rid of, we got rid of that. As far as medical marijuana is concerned, it took me a long while to basically even, I think it's one of the last holdout, to even agree to have medical marijuana in, in the city of Bellflower. And it was the same, the same person that council member Coops kind of convinced me, that family, the Minahan family, that there is a place for medical marijuana. And I strongly feel that that was the case, and the diet of the, the patient is a doctor, so he knows what he's talking about. So there was, there is a medical benefit in, in terms of marijuana is concerned. But I, I'll go on the record that I, I'm not, I'm not ready to, to take that kind of leap from medical to, to mari, to recreational at this point. Okay? With that?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
Yes, we're ready for a motion.
All right, go ahead.
Sonny, you want to make it?
No.
I, I can, I can make a motion, I'll make a motion.
We're not willing.
No.
No, I'll make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the report. There being no second, the motion died. So I made a motion.
I make a motion for thirteen D, for recreational cannabis. But would I have support for, for mayorin, marrying Long Beach's hours and, and doing security monitoring? If not?
I'd like to have a little more discussion on that stuff.
Okay, then thirteen D, as is in the staff report.
I'll second.
A motion by council member Dunn, and a second by council member Coops, just to be more specific to...
I'll read it, okay.
To direct the city manager, right? And make sure that we are, we're good.
Direct the city manager to provide the city council with the draft regulations.
Or?
For the existing Bellflower municipal code regulations governing cannabis.
Recreational.
That would facilitate cannabis operations, that would facilitate approving and implementing cannabis business permits for recreational cannabis. As directed by?
As directed by staff.
Yes. As the council.
Well, the, the motion is to direct the city manager, right, such a motion? I want to...
Yeah.
As I understand Mr. Dunn's motion, his motion is to direct the staff to develop a resolution allowing recreational cannabis sales in Bellflower.
What I'm thinking is, is have the attorney make up a resol, resolution, and we'll vote on it and be done.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, is that sufficient?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I understand the direction, the timing of the direction is unclear to me, are you suggesting doing it tonight, or bringing it back?
Tonight.
The question...
We need to vote on this first, and then we come back and vote on the resolutions.
So what I would say is, vote first to approve recreational, if that's what you're going to do, and then second, take up the issue whether or not you want the city attorney to draft a resolution tonight that can be approved tonight, or if you want it brought back the next meeting. I think that's the two steps we're looking at right now.
Mr. City Attorney, do you concur with that? I wish you were doing it right.
I would concur with the city manager's suggestion.
Okay. So is that, is that your amended?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say the whole time. But I was going to do it in two steps and not one step.
Okay, very good.
Well, yeah, what's going to be the, we still got to draw, let's vote on whether, let's vote on thirteen D now, and then we'll vote on the attorney making a resolution. Tonight. We have to vote twice.
So Mr. Dunn's asking you to vote on recreational marijuana, or cannabis sales in, in Bellflower right now?
But we...
Whether to approve the recreational use.
So it's basically a staff report, I mean, that's the recommendation?
Correct.
Is that the, is that the motion?
We're making a motion for staff to come up with a resolution, and we'll do it tonight.
Oh, no, okay.
I think you're confusing.
Now you're saying, combining it into two steps, is it your recommendation that you want the staff, I'm sorry, that you want the council to vote on approving recreational marijuana, marijuana sales in Bellflower? And for the city attorney to develop a resolution that can be approved tonight?
Yes.
Okay, that's what he's recommending.
That was a lot clearer.
Did the city clerk catch the, the motion? There's been so many changes, can you restate the motion so that we're, it's clear for us?
The motion is to approve recreational sales of cannabis in Bellflower, and approve the city attorney to develop a resolution that can also be approved tonight.
Second. Say, say the second part again?
Direct the city attorney to develop a resolution that can also be approved tonight.
I, as I understand it, what Mr. Dunn, I think he's suggesting is instead of bringing it back...
Yeah.
You just do it on one vote, and...
Okay, so how long would it take the city attorney to, to?
I think he's been working on it.
We take a recess?
Yeah, a question on the, the motion and second, again, just so everybody's clear. So right now, we're just going to be addressing the city's policy to permit recreational.
Right.
All right.
To permit?
To permit.
Right.
Okay.
Now, when it comes to standards, like there was some discussion on hours and other things, that's...
We're not doing that at all.
That's down the road.
Yeah, down the road, I guess, if, if ever it comes back, someone has to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, all right.
I tried to put that in, in the consideration, but I didn't have support.
Okay, so in, in the meantime, can we move into council, council reports while the city attorney is drafting, is that okay?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could have a vote on, on the motion, there was a first and a second, I believe.
Yes, we're clarifying the motion, so...
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then once the vote is taken, assuming that the vote goes through, then I'm happy, then I suggest taking either a break, or going through council communications, and then taking a break to allow me to go through this.
We can do it now?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Is that okay? Can we do the? Can we do the?
He wants to take a vote on the item and consider, on the item and consideration.
Okay, so...
Call for the vote on the...
So you want to restate, because you, you kind of, it was, the, the motion was muddied, so to speak.
Well, yeah, that's kind of...
So I want to make sure that we're voting on the right thing. Okay. Let's restate the first motion that we would like to vote on.
How many times are we going to restate it for heaven's sake?
Are you clear with the motion?
I think we're not.
I second it.
Yeah, I'm clear. The city, the...
Because it was, something was added.
No.
No?
Right? In terms of the resolution?
Just what the city clerk was just...
Direct, no, no, the city clerk direct, says to direct the city attorney to draft a resolution, right?
Yep. So what the city attorney is looking for clarification is, Mr. Dunn has made a motion to allow the sale of recreational cannabis in Bellflower and, and to direct the city attorney tonight to draft a resolution that can memorializing that change.
So we don't wait to wait for your resolution then, right? We can vote on it?
Yes, please do vote on it.
There you go.
And I'll bring you back the resolution of...
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Uh, no. All right.
Okay.
So can we do council reports?
Is Mr. Garza gone for the evening?
My mind wasn't there yet, sorry.
Oh, okay. It's going to be more efficient.
There we go, you are efficient.
Yeah, okay, we're trying to.
Before 10.
Yeah, I know. Let's go.
I'd just like to say that the construction down at Artisan Bellflower Boulevard is almost done, and the In-N-Out will be open by the end of the month. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hamada?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I was quite busy since our last council meeting, but again, I wanted to, again, congratulate the Parks and Rec staff for the Street Fest and the Flix, Friday Flix. Was able to check out the, the last two Street Fests, and again, I think there was a great turnout and a, a lot of, a lot of energy on the Boulevard and people eating out and the band, the bands were, were, were good. So, you know, kudos to the staff there. Last month and this month, also participated on the Charter Subcommittee, again, so that's moving forward. Last month, I did have a chance to do a ride along, not as exciting as July 4th, but I did, I did, I did go along with one of the deputies for a, a morning run of the community and got to spend some time in the vehicle, but also spent a good amount of time at the, at Lakewood Station because they did pick up a few people. So I did participate with the ARC event, recognizing achievements and supporters in Downey, and also participated on a, on a really neat Coca-Cola tour in Downey. So just wanted to say, go Cherry Coke, because that's, that's, that's one of the homes of Cherry Coke. So last month, I, I sat through a SCAG Rena video conference, and so just, let's save that for down the road, because there's going to be a lot of discussion on methodology and how we come up, how the SCAG comes up with the numbers for, for our community, how many number, homes that are new units that need to be constructed in Downey, I mean, sorry, Bellflower, so. Had a chance to go to Bob Archuleta's open house, State Senator Archuleta in Norwalk, and he can pack the house. So again, kudos for Bob on, on what he's doing and really a very friendly Senate, State Senator that's really open to hearing people. So had a great time at the Chamber Morning Mingle, and I think it set a record for attendees. So congratulations to the Chamber for getting businesses out during the morning and talking it up and hopefully planning out some events. I think it was nearly sixty members of the community. Last month, I also went to the retirement event of former council member Diane Martinez. Diane and I go way back, we've known each other for forty years during our Park and Rec days, so in, in Paramount, and, you know, congratulations Diane. I know she's still going to be very active in her community, but also she's promised to stay active with Contract Cities. So last week, I went to the SCAG meeting and we heard more about the, you know, Connect SoCal and again, transportation, other policies are going to be related to that and so, and also we, those were able to enjoy our, you know, colleagues' installation to the LA Division of the, of the League of California Cities. Juan Garza, again, congratulations to our, our councilman here, and he'll definitely keep the league out in the forefront. And last week, I had a chance to visit the National Night Out, and again, I want to thank our public safety, again, a great event, and just able for the public to get, get up close to our sheriff and seeing some of their equipment and just having a great event out and so. But again, some more kudos to the Park and Rec staff, again, for their, did have a chance to follow up on their penny carnival and also their volun, their, their backpack giveaway. And so they did a great job, and I heard some, you know, community members praise the city for, again, having the event and just getting kids, keeping kids active and get them out there to the parks and just having a great time in the community. So all is good in Bellflower and hopefully more things, more things to happen. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, councilmember Hamada. I think you're going to adjourn the meeting also in memory of...
Oh, I get that too, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Quickly, wanted to adjourn, or request that this meeting be adjourned in, in honor of Albert Eugene Coleman. He was a dear friend. Albert Eugene Coleman was born January 26, 1929, and he passed away this past June 13 at the age of ninety. Al married the love of his, love of his life, Jean, who I also knew for many years back in the, back in the early 50s. Together, they had four sons, and I grew up with the boys. We all went to Bellflower High School, and those first sons went to, went on to give them fourteen grandchildren. And with fourteen grandchildren, they ended up producing thirty-four great-grandchildren. So Al had a great life and a great family, and Al used to always say, you know, grandchildren are the greatest thing. He just wished he would have them first. So, but Al had a great love for his family, community, our church, and our country. Again, Jean passed away before him, and also his two sisters and his five brothers. So again, you know, he was a dear and faithful friend to many, and he definitely will be missed, and our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Coleman family, which is scattered all over the country and some in this world, so. His son Pat, well, actually, three of his boys are pastors, so love of his church was, was great. So I get to see one of his sons, Steve, regularly, and actually, we, we graduated from Bellflower at the same time, so again, many blessings to the Coleman family, and again, I know that we all signed the letters, getting them out for the sons, so. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Coops?
Do I have to follow that? Anyway, I, this morning...
You have to.
We have to, because I'm last.
Yeah.
The, no, the mayor's last. This morning, the mayor and Mr. Hamada and myself went over to Bellflower Unified School District Central Office and had a bite to eat this morning at eight o'clock with all the new teachers and the administrators for the local schools. And so it's always important to know that school's starting later this week, and be extra vigilant as you drive, because the traffic's going to change, and kids are going to be picked up by buses, and there's going to be crossing guards in action, and that's all important for our safety of our children, and that'll all start again real soon. And this week is the week, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Coops. Just a few things here. Again, I just want to thank and congratulate our Parks and Recreation Department for a wonderful summer Street Fest and food trucks and flix. It is a wonderful break for our citizens to enjoy summer for eight consecutive weeks. It was fun. Also, the city, most of the city council member, we toured the Stormwater Recapture Project at Carruthers Park.
It was a beautiful day.
The project is, is going well. It was, it was hot when we toured it, but it was well worth it, and I, I thank the contractor for keeping, keeping their promise in terms of cleaning up the street for Vista and Ripon Street to make sure that the residents are not inconvenienced due to the construction. I think they have, they have done a wonderful job. It's not perfect, but at least I got a one compliment from one of the residents in the area. Thank the city council for a wonderful job in terms of cleaning up the, those streets. Also, Mayor Protem, Juan Garza and myself attended the, the talent show sponsored by Arts Allowed. I'd like to give a big shout out to Steve Dollinger. He is a great producer. It was a wonderful event. I, I think it showcased Bellflower, not only in our city, but among other cities, all the way to Brea, to Orange County, because participants, contestants came from different areas in, in this, different cities in this area. So again, thank you to Arts Allowed and keep up the good work. Also, last Saturday, I went to the, I attended the breakfast or open house or meeting with council, with Congresswoman Linda Sanchez held at Steel Craft, and she was just amazed with what's going on in downtown Bellflower. It was a good turnout. I think there's about fifty people who spoke with her. She was not feeling well, but she stayed the whole time, talked to everyone who lined up until about, I think she started nine, nine-thirty until about eleven, eleven-thirty. So thanks to Congresswoman Sanchez for coming to Bellflower and showcasing our city. And just, just a, I want to piggyback on what councilmember Coops said today. We went to the new teachers' breakfast with the, of the Bellflower Unified School District. I'm just kind of amazed, and I really thank the school district for sponsoring, for sponsoring that, that breakfast, because it's, it's a nice welcome to new teachers, especially brand-new teachers, that they, they kind of, they're oriented and they know that they're not alone, they get support from their fellow teachers and from the administration. Okay? So with that, we will go back to that motion that we kind of delayed. So, all right, is it our city attorney going to take us through this agenda item, or this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have in front of you a redlined version of the resolution that was last adopted by the city council, which I believe was Resolution 1963? It's, anyway, it's been within the past two months that you adopted the last resolution that affected the manner in which cannabis business permits were issued. I've taken that resolution and redlined it, which is in front of you. I think there's some extra copies. This one's 1965, but I meant the last one. As you'll see, most of these changes are not substantive, it simply takes off the M in front of the MCBP to designate these as cannabis business permits. I'm happy to go through each one, and let me just highlight the sections. So in section two, you'll see that the main inhibitor on recreational cannabis has been removed and replaced with language that states CBP, CBPs may be granted for either medical or recreational, recreational cannabis use. I've added a definition as a conversion applicant, which means a permutee with one or more valid MCBPs that seek to convert their permits from an M, from a MCBP to a CBP for recreational cannabis uses. I added a new section, which specifically addresses conversion applicants, which states a conversion applicant must file an application with the city manager or designee to seek conversion from a MCBP to a CBP for recreational cannabis uses. Such application must demonstrate that the permutee complies with all aspects of its existing MCBP. The application must also provide a supplementary security plan that must be approved by the city manager or designee to ensure that there are sufficient protections to public health and safety from any new security concerns arising from the sale, cultivation, manufacturing, et cetera, of recreational cannabis. Such approval cannot be unreasonably withheld. A conversion applicant may appeal any decision regarding the security plan to the city council in accordance with the BMC, which is the Bellflower Municipal Code. Conversion applicants are not required to pay any fees or liquidated damages, e.g. tax prepayments in amounts greater than already submitted to activated MCBP. You'll see in section seven, with regard to application fees, it now states CBP permutees, but not conversion applicants, must pay an application fee. That means that these conversion applications are at no charge. This was not discussed by the city council, but based upon the general discussion of making this an easy transition, I took some liberty with the language, but I wanted to identify that for you.
So these are only for brand-new application, not conversions?
Brand-new applications would be required to pay an application fee in accordance with Resolution Number 19-15, which has the 28.5 application fee within it, along with several other fees.
Okay.
I think those are the highlights, based upon the ten or fifteen minutes that I If I could just add a footnote, as a reminder, all of these permits expire at the end of the year. So if there's cleanup to be done, we can do that at the end of the year when these expire, and we come back with a resolution with regard to the renewal application process.
Well, if it's something that's major, I think you can come back to us sooner than that. If it's major.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Coops?
If we were to approve this tonight, what will be the effective date for the change?
Tomorrow.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you were to adopt this resolution tonight, it would become effective immediately, and the city would be open to taking applications from current MCBP permutees who wish to convert to recreational use.
Question to the city manager, how do you see the process of conversion?
I think the applicants will, will immediately ask the state for a permit to sell recreational cannabis at their various types of dispensary or manufacturing or whatever they have a license for, and the, the state will notify us if that's in compliance with council policy. I will notify the state that it is in compliance with council policy, and as soon as they issue that permit, they will start operating and selling.
Will the state be able to process them starting tomorrow?
I don't know how quickly, that's a better, I don't know how quickly the state turns it around. It is what, that's a bureaucracy, I don't know.
No, no, you, the city, from the city's perspective?
Yes.
You'd be able to process applications for conversion?
I believe we can process them. Okay? Then we can process these things tomorrow? Yeah. Yeah. Okay, processing tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. You can process, but you can accept conversion applications.
We can accept.
And wait for the state.
So the major change here, city attorney, is basically on item, on section, section five, right?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
The conversion.
Well, I, I guess, it depends on your perspective. The major change is to section two, which takes out the prohibition.
Yeah, I know, but in terms of the, the language, I mean...
In terms of substantive language, the major change is the addition of new section five, which talks about the conversion applicants coming in and filing an application to convert from a medical cannabis business permit to just a cannabis business permit for recreational uses.
Okay. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number nineteen sixty-five.
Second.
Uh, motion by councilmember Dunton, second by councilmember Coops, to approve Resolution Number nineteen dash sixty-five?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, question, quick question on the, uh, section ten H in regards to the, uh, the annual contribution for the, for the drug rehab program, the five thousand, uh, to my colleagues is, uh, is that adequate or can? Is that something to be considered potentially down the road for change?
I would consider that on renewal.
On renewal?
If there are, yeah, extension or renewal for coming up in November.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that's clear. And, and also in this case, uh, again, it's, I don't see anything, uh, hours are not included here, just for the record.
No.
All right, just so everybody knows.
Okay, nothing has changed except that we're allowing recreational.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, roll call please.
Councilmember Dunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Abstain. Okay, so with that, uh, we're adjourning this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five-thirty PM on Monday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.